Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the January seventeen, two thousand and twelve meeting of the Adana City Council and the Adana Housing and Redevelopment Authority. Go full, please, Ms. Megan.
Member Bennett.
Here.
Member Brindle.
Here.
Member Sprague.
Here.
Member Swenson.
Here.
There, Hovland. Here. Is there a motion to adopt the meeting agenda in its published form?
Second.
We've moved to second if we adopt the meeting agenda in its published form. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post say nay. Carried. Next order of business this evening is the adoption of the consent agenda. Is there anyone on the council that wishes to remove an item from the consent agenda? Member Sprague.
Yes, your honor. Items four I and four L, please. I'd like to remove those.
Thank you. Anyone else? With the exception of four I and four L, is there a motion to approve the balance of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Moved to second, we approve the balance of the consent agenda with the exclusion of four I and L. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post say nay. Carried. Now, let's take four I.
Yes, your honor. Just wanted to get a little bit more information from Director Keprios or staff regarding the lifespan of our Zamboni machines. Just what's the average lifespan? And how many do we have in service at that facility?
I'm sorry, you're looking at me. I should have an answer to that question.
On the request for purchase in excess of twenty thousand, they're getting a new Zamboni at Breymar, and I was just curious what the lifespan is of those machines and how many currently we have in service.
I believe there are three at Breymar, and you should be able to get a good twenty years out of a Zamboni. They're electric now.
Which, if I'm correct, Mayor DeNeal, addresses the concern with emissions that's been
Correct.
now needing to be addressed by some other cities.
Right. All of the equipment in our, all of the equipment we use to create ice, tend ice inside is electric equipment.
And this says, "Anticipated to be built and delivered within seven to nine months." Are these being built at the North Pole, or?
No, but they're not, they are, I'm not sure where they're built today, but there's a long, there is a long notice period to give the company to produce them.
Okay. So more of the production schedule.
Right.
Okay. All right. With that information in hand, I will move this matter?
Moved to second, we approve four I, which is the purchase of an ice resurfacer for Breymar Ice Arena, replacing a nineteen ninety-six model. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post say nay. Carried. And then, four L, deals with engineering services proposed for the Bike Boulevard improvement.
Yes, your honor. I'm looking at section three-three of the scope of work on the Bike Boulevard Design Proposal dated January eleventh. It states, "Prepare ninety-five percent planned construction documents and submit for M.D.O.'s state aid review. Note, our scope of work assumes the construction plan will consist of only roadway signing and pavement marking plans." Is there not to be any geometric changes where it passes under sixty-two?
Councilmember Sprague and council, right now, we anticipate that we'll be looking at that, but as far as the funding goes, the two hundred and twenty thousand dollars that would be left in this fund, that we want to have them do the actual geometrics. But we want to identify what could be done in that area, and then that's going to have to either be acquire more funds from the federal monies that the TLC is appropriating, and then go after more engineering services. But for thirty thousand dollars, that wouldn't include and couldn't include the geometric redesign of that area.
But the representative from TLC also said we could exceed our two hundred and fifty thousand dollar amount for the right design.
Right.
So that's been being kept in mind here as we go forward?
Absolutely.
Okay.
We want to identify what could happen there, and then go after additional funds. I do know from other sources that the TLC is sitting on quite a few millions of dollars that are unspent right now, that we'd like to go after for that. But we have to have some type of a design to prove that we could utilize those funds for that area.
Okay. Perfect. I will move this matter.
Moved to second, we approve the engineering services, item four L for the Bike Boulevard improvements. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post say nay. Carried. And Wayne, for the folks in the audience, why don't you just give a brief bit of background on this matter, and explain what TLC is and how they're sitting on all this federal money?
Mayor and council and the audience tonight, a few years ago, we acquired a grant from the federal highways that transit for livable communities is appropriate. Transit for livable communities is an organization that took, I forget how many millions of dollars that Congressman Overstar had basically got from Minnesota to do pilot projects on twenty-five million dollars to do pilot projects in the greater Minneapolis area. And we're fortunate to have about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to start out to do a, what we call a Bike Boulevard, that would run down Fifty-Fourth Street from Minneapolis, from France Avenue, would proceed westward to Woodville Avenue, and then down Woodville Avenue to Valley View Road, and then Valley View Road down to West Seventieth Street, and eventually tie into the bikeways down by Centennial Lakes, and then tie into the Three Rivers Trail system. So it's our connection into, essentially into the Minneapolis Bike Trails, Bike Boulevard system.
Can you also mention briefly how it will connect into Seventieth Street and the striping plan for the west side of Seventieth and into Bloomington?
Yeah. The connection will run down Valley View Road and then go through the new roundabout, the single-lane roundabout, and then from there, you can go either eastward down Seventieth to the promenade area down the Centennial Lakes area, so you can go westward down Seventieth Street through the bike lanes, and then we're looking at re-striping the West Seventieth Street, going westward from Highway one hundred to the west, to Antrim, and then back down to, or to Valley View Road. So it's kind of the, if you look at the comprehensive plan that the city has adopted in two thousand and eight, it matches with the comprehensive plan of the bikeway system for the entire system. So it's a smaller piece of the greater system of bikeways in the city.
Thank you.
A follow-up question, and that is, if the bike lanes are also created on Cahill, as has been recommended by the Bike Adana Task Force and the Adana Transportation Commission, will that not then lead to a connection leading south to the Highland Trails in Bloomington?
Absolutely. The other connection piece would be on Seventy-Eighth Street that we'd have to look at, making a safe route up over the Burlington or, no, the CP rail bridge on Seventy-Eighth Street to get them to East Bush Lake Road, and then down towards the Highlands area. Yes.
Good. Thank you. The next portion of the agenda deals with special recognitions and presentations. We have none of those in that category tonight, and we will move next into the public hearing portion of the agenda. We have two public hearings this evening, both dealing with proposed roadway improvements in neighborhoods, and I want to tell you, folks, that when we have these proposed matters in front of us, the room is always full with people that have concerns and many questions. So we have, I think, done a pretty good, effective job of communicating with the public in advance. Our staff has developed a process that tries to give folks good notice and good chance for participation before the public hearing. And now we will turn to Mr. Sullivan, Jack Sullivan, from our Public Works Department, to take us through the first part of the public hearing dealing with the proposed assessment for the Countryside Neighborhood Roadway Improvement, BA three eighty-five. Mr. Sullivan, thank you.
Thank you, mayor. Council members, before I jump into the details of that feasibility report and the public hearing, at our last meeting in January, we had a discussion about how the Engineering Public Works Department prioritizes neighborhood and street reconstruction projects, and I thought that'd be good to kind of, at our last meeting, I did it in a verbal format. I'd like to try to expand upon that a little bit tonight and add in a few graphics and a little bit more information to help both council members and the audience here this evening to understand how we go about this kind of projects, or how we prioritize our neighborhood reconstructions. As staff, we look at a number of issues. There's five major issues that we typically look at. The age of the roadways, that's a real easy one to kind of get a gauge of where we are. Doesn't always tell the whole story, but at least gets you started. Pavement Condition Index, the PCI, we talked about that quite a bit, as a rating that helps the Engineering Department determine some of this scheduling. We also look at the sanitary sewer, and when we look at that, we look at deficiencies of that system, a number of blockages, collapses, or other deficiencies in the line. Most of these lines were built fifty, somewhere between fifty and sixty years ago, and with many things that need rehabilitation. Water main, another issue that's very critical, we look at the breakages of our water system and the number of repairs that we have to do on that system. That helps us to determine where to proceed. And then we also look at disturbance to residents, and I'll talk a little more about that in a minute. Here's an example of some pavements that have shown their age. As pavements age, they oxidize. The UV rays certainly attack the oils in this pavement, and then also, so they start to deteriorate from the surface, but they also deteriorate from below ground as well. The freeze thaw cycles that we have here in Minnesota, the subsoil conditions that we have under these roadways. So structurally, a roadway can deteriorate from both from the surface and from below. Here's an example of some roadways, you see the alligator cracking, where the cracking develops longitudinally and horizontally, and it gets smaller and smaller chunks all the time. When you get down to these areas that are the size of softballs or maybe teacups, saucer plates, really showing that a roadway is letting a lot of water in, no longer structurally capable of holding up the traffic items that it has, and it really increases our maintenance. A lot of potholes, that's when the potholes really start to happen. And pothole patchings, crack fillings, and the seal code activities have been known as no longer really a viable solution from an engineering standpoint, a long-term maintenance standpoint, and that's when we look to do reconstruction projects. We talked a little bit about the pavement age, and this is an example of our city. All the streets in red are roads that are over thirty-five years of age, and that's about sixty-two percent of our roadways. We have over two hundred miles of roads in town, and a large percentage of those are no longer, are above thirty-five years of age, and that's just a, thirty-five is a kind of an industry, not so much a milestone, but just a kind of rule of thumb that we use as far as when streets really have shown their age, pavement no longer is viable. So just a good, quick example of, and you can see a lot of the community that we've already rebuilt, Country Club and some of the neighborhoods to the north of Vernon. However, the neighborhoods that have been built more recently in the south and southwest are ones that need to be As we move on, pavement condition maps, a little difficult to read here, but basically what it shows is we've taken the entire city and broken it into neighborhoods, the geographical areas, neighborhoods, loose definition of a neighborhood, we look at it more of a geographic area, similar-sized lots, similar type of age of the streets, similar type of streets whether it has curb and gutter or no curb and gutter, and we've broken it down, and this is some data from our two thousand and nine pavement rating map. I zoomed in on the two neighborhoods that we'll be discussing tonight, both Countryside in the lower left in the pink, and then the Richmond Hills Park in the upper right of that insert here. If I can back up to this graph, the color coded means those are projects that we have tentatively scheduled for the next five years. However, the needs far exceed those next five years, and you can see all the parts of the graphic here, the map, that don't have a color associated, but have a number. Those will be streets that we'll have, looking to get onto our pavement improvement program here in the coming years. So kind of an example of what we have. This information gets, or information similar to this gets posted off to the website. We're able to tell individuals, your streets in twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen, we anticipate doing some reconstruction activities. Like I said, this data is a little outdated. If you look at Countryside and Richmond Hills Park today, I think the PCI numbers are a little bit lower than what you see here. This is another good graph to kind of also show the pavement condition index, and kind of on a graphic scale. From the city's standpoint, zero being a roadway that's in very poor condition rated, and then one hundred being a very good roadway, we have broken it down into three segments. Anything less than a forty-five looks to have total reconstruction of the roadway. Between a forty-five and a sixty-five, we consider mill and overlay a maintenance-type activity, and then above sixty-five and up to ninety-five, we look at doing a seal code operation. So for this graph here, it kind of shows the number of miles that we have in the city, and where they rank in the different ratings. So about thirty-seven, thirty-eight percent of our roadways fall below that forty-five threshold that we use for one of our criteria measurements. Another twenty-one percent fall between the mill and overlay category, and another twenty-five percent of mileage falls in the, in the little bit larger seal code area, and then about fifteen percent or so fall above that ninety-five point. We have a citywide average of about fifty-one in our community right now. As I mentioned before, our streets are aging a little faster than we can repair them. We have more miles built at a similar age than we can get at in any given year. Another graphic that will maybe be a little difficult to read here, this just shows our sanitary sewer blockages, so I zoomed it up a little bit to have a better look. We're able to map within the city all of our sewer blockages and water main breaks, and this information is very valuable as we proceed in the coming years to know which neighborhoods we need to do. Here's an example of the water main as well, kind of zoomed in to show that as well. All the blue dots in this case represent water main breaks that would happen in the city, and we're able to then know what year those were done in, what kind of condition the pipe was in, cast iron, ductile iron, whatever the pipe material was, and able to use that information to help to create a overview of our street improvements. And the last thing we do is, this is a little bit less analytical and a little more engineering judgment, is that we look to minimize the number of projects or the number of activities that are happening in a given area. We tend to work in an area for a couple of years, a part of town, and then move on to another part, kind of give them a breather from construction activities. Example of this would be the Country Club, two-year project side by side, then Forty-Fourth Street just to the north. Now, we're kind of done in that area, and we're moving on to some other parts of town. We also did something very similar down at Seventieth Street, where we did some work with the Creston Hills neighborhood, and then the projects on either side, and they kind of moved away for a while. We're also mindful of our other agencies, the state, the county, have projects that are going on. We want to either kind of dovetail into those projects or hold back on our projects until they're able to do their work. We're also mindful of our state aid projects that we have in town. We have a number of capital improvement programs for state aid that are coming out for the next five years, and we want to think logically about when we do that project in conjunction with the neighborhood projects associated near that project. Seventieth Street's an example where we did neighborhoods to the north first, and then Seventieth last. Forty-Fourth Street's an example of that as well. So those are some of the things that go into our overall criteria for judging which neighborhood goes in which year. So we kind of aggregate all those numbers, aggregate all the information, and look to then kind of lay out that five-year capital improvement plan that is part of the citywide budget as well as our engineering documentation. So that's an overview. I guess I'll take any questions on that before we get into more information on the actual public hearing itself.
Questions for Mr. Sullivan. Member Sprague.
Did I not see a storm, stormwater sewer map on there as well? Because that's part of that aggregated analysis, correct?
Yes, thank you. You didn't, there wasn't a map that really outlined our storm sewer deficiencies. We rely on our Storm Sewer Comprehensive Plan. I believe about a month ago now, the council adopted that current plan. We use that documentation there again, where that plan has outlined areas of deficiencies, and we'll integrate that into our system as well. So that'll be another driving factor in this. Thank you.
Mr. Sullivan, a couple of weeks ago, we had some folks in here from two other neighborhoods, Valley Estates and Arctic, yeah, Viking Hills, and after the hearing with Valley Estates, which is just a neighborhood right west of the high school, a lot of folks over there thought their roads still looked pretty good. And we use this pavement condition index process, and I really felt like we didn't do a very good job of explaining to them that it might not be just what it looks like on the surface to a lay eye like mine or anybody else on the council, but we have a distinct methodology that we follow here in looking at what pavement condition it actually is in that entire strata on the surface, and then all the way down to the Class V. Can you speak a little bit more to that? Because I think that's important information to have. I always think about the guy who looked so good the day before he died, you know? And I worry about that here, that you might look pretty good on the surface, but underneath it might not be so good.
Thank you, mayor. You're correct, that one of the things that we look at in the pavement rating, the PCI, there's a lot more information that could go into there, but that's a proven program for looking at pavement. The different cracks and the different types of undulations that happen in the pavement really are showing character flaws of the pavement column, being the pavement surface itself, the aggregate base beneath it, and then whatever the more virgin-type soils are beneath it. Those three components really reflect up in the pavement, and that's where you see the problem. So the pavement is able to tell you quite a bit in the deficiencies of all three of those different strata. So yes, as part of that PCI number, they go out there and rate that, and they look at many, many factors, horizontal longitudinal cracking, different scaling of the pavement, different types of cracking, like you said, vertical separation if the road starts to sink or pothole in areas, all that goes into defining that. So that's some of the information that they use to look at that. So you're correct, some of the pavement on the surface may start, may look like it still has some life left in it, but we're seeing that there's a lot of factors that are really showing us, almost like an X-ray, so to speak, that you're seeing things below the surface that you can really indicate that we're going to have some problems long term.
Okay. All right. Thank you. That prompted any other inquiries? Member Brindle?
I have a question. Do you have a presentation and describe the project?
Yeah, he is.
Okay.
Yeah, this was just a preliminary inquiry from council, if they had any questions. All right. Why don't you proceed with the Countryside Neighborhood Roadway Proposed Improvement, so we can learn more about that proposed improvement?
Well, thank you, mayor, and council members, we'll, like you said, move right into this. We're here tonight to talk about the Countryside Neighborhood Roadway Improvement, BA three eighty-five. This is an area that's located southeast of Countryside Elementary School, kind of bordered on the south by Crosstown and Valley View, Tracy Avenue on the west, the railroad tracks on the east, and just south, actually one street south of Benton, one actually south of Countryside here. It's a neighborhood that's made up of about one hundred and nineteen homes, and it's got a number of, number of streets within this area. The vast majority of this area does not have curb and gutter today. This was a project that was initiated by staff as part of the capital improvement program and the pavement condition rating that we just talked about. This is one of the reasons this project was elevated to and slotted for construction in two thousand and twelve. Originally built in the early fifties, so all the utilities and the pavement surface itself is of the same vintage. We've had normal maintenance activities on the streets. We do our typical maintenance and pothole patching and the like. However, we're seeing the pavement just beyond its useful life. We're seeing that the ratings are certainly dropping down in that category where we do need to do something more than just a maintenance activity. We also recognize as part of the surface water drainage map, comprehensive plan, that we have some surface drainage problems out there. We have some backyard drainage issues from the residents we've heard about. We also know that we have some sanitary sewer deficiencies, not wholesale replacement out here, but just some rehabilitation of the system. And we have some undersized water mains. A section of the water main out there is an inch and a half that services the neighborhood. Certainly, we're looking to do some improvements to that as well. And the services, this is the neighborhood, if you've driven through it in the last year or so, has seen a real resurgence or an increase in tear-down rebuilds or rather large additions, and so we're believing that there's some service upgrades that should be done as well in this neighborhood. A couple of examples of the streets themselves, they vary in width from twenty-six to thirty feet wide. They kind of have a little bit of that undulation to them. It's happened over time as the streets have, we've pothole patched along the edges, things like that. Like I said, no curb and gutter in these neighborhoods, certainly low in the PCI rating. We're down in the eighteen's, rather low numbers in this neighborhood, and we're sitting on top of silty clay-type soils, and that's one of the things we talked about briefly a minute ago, is that the soil condition below has a lot to do with how the road and the gravel section above respond and age. Do they age well, or do they age a little more quickly based on the soil conditions and the susceptibility to freeze thaw cycles and holding water? So some of the improvements we're proposing in this neighborhood is to remove all the pavement and gravel surfaces out there, gravel subbases out there, replace it with new asphalt service of a consistent width of twenty-eight feet. With that, we'll be adding curb and gutter, concrete curb and gutter. It does not have curb and gutter today, so we'll be looking to do the addition of the concrete curb and gutter out of the Storm Sewer Fund. We're also looking to tighten some oversized intersections. I'll show an example here in a second of one. Along Crescent Drive, there's four locations that have very sprawling intersections, and you'll see some in the next public hearing and presentation as well, about looking to tighten those up. It creates, well, one, it's less pavement to put back, so the cost is lowered. Secondly, we have a less that we have to maintain, and then thirdly, with varying degrees of success based on how much traffic's actually out there, it tends to be more of a traffic calming and a defining of the right-of-way. Some of these larger intersections, you get to them, and you don't know who actually has the right-of-way out there, so this is helpful in defining the right-of-way. We're not planning to change any of the lighting in this neighborhood. There's Cobra Head Woodpole Cobra Head Lighting that's out there. However, there is some discussion that was had at the Transportation Commission about recommending sidewalk in the neighborhood, so we've talked about that, another example. Here's a graphic that kind of illustrates the tightening of the intersection. Currently, today, you can see that there's, all this area out here is pavement, and then the same thing over here. This area is all currently pavement. This is all one big intersection, and our goal is to use this more yellow-defined intersection teed up kind of scenario that would allow, like I said, better defined right-of-way, help to control speeds a little bit, and just less pavement, actually reduction of the hard surface in the neighborhood is quite considerable when you start adding up all of these intersections. One of the other things we want to talk about is the sidewalk recommendation. This was made by the Transportation Commission at the January ninth meeting. The actual recommendation is part of your packet tonight. They are recommending sidewalk, it's shown in pink or purple color here, within this neighborhood, and this is something that the residents, through our neighborhood informational meetings and questionnaires, were not, at least did not respond favorably to. However, the residents have not been made aware of the Transportation Commission's recommendation and move forward with the sidewalk, and that's something that we talked about in the cover letter here, that if sidewalk is, in this kind of configuration, is discussed tonight, we may need to over, hold over this public hearing until we can properly notify for the sidewalk improvements. And right now, we're estimating it's about seven hundred dollars per RU to add sidewalk in this neighborhood, seven hundred dollars per home. Maybe a little bit high at the moment, but we're still in preliminary design. There's a lot of grade issues out there, a lot of driveways that would have to be reconfigured quite a ways up, some retaining walls, and a few other things, so it's kind of raising the cost that we're talking about tonight. Some of the underground improvements, we talked about the fact that we're doing surface improvements, and that's one of the things we can visually see, but we can also visually see a lot of the underground improvement needs as well, televise the sanitary sewer, have our water main breaks to know what we need to do. So we're doing some cure-in-place pipelining as well out there, and like I said, we had some water mains that's undersized that will need to be upgraded. We're proposing to replace all the water services on all these homes and the entire neighborhood with one-inch copper water services. These services today are about three-quarter inch, and as these homes get reconstructed, enlarged, upsized, they will more than likely all require one-inch services, something that we've done on previous projects and look to do in this neighborhood as well. The main's in good condition, just the services will be somewhat undersized, and knowing that we'll put a brand-new street down, and there'll be a lot of people cutting into this street to do this work, it's just much easier to have it done ahead of time. The city is the owner of the water service from the main to the, approximately the right-of-way, to the right-of-way, to the curb stop location, so that will be done as part of our Storm Sewer, as our water main fund. And there's also a number of Storm Sewer upgrades that we'll be looking at doing based on the comprehensive water resource plan that we have. And we'll be looking to do some sump pump installation as well. A number of residents on the questionnaire results indicated that they have rather flat areas or actually depressions in their backyard that would like to have some availability to be able to pump water to a city system for that improvement. Our system will completely be on our right-of-way, however, I've talked with a few residents onsite and mentioned to them that they can either discharge their sump pumps to that directly or have gravity drainage if they have enough fall in their backyard to make that work. This project is split between an assessable portion and then a Storm Sewer, Sanitary Sewer, and Water Main Fund. We have about four hundred thousand for Sanitary Sewer, another four hundred and seventy for Water Main, and about five hundred and thirty thousand for Storm Sewer bringing in. That totaled about one point four million, and then another one point four million and some change for an assessable project cost. So in this neighborhood, we have more about fifty So in this neighborhood, we have more of a 50-50 split between the utility costs and the assessable costs. Very, very typical in how we do all of our street reconstruction projects and special assessments, we're looking at creating a REU, residential equivalency unit for each home within the project. A one REU would be $12,360 as the pending assessment amount. That amount is pending until the project's complete and we have a final assessment hearing. And then six homes within the neighborhood would be charged at a one-third REU, so just over, well, $4,120 is the estimated amount as well. This graphic here is a good representation of the vast majority of the homes in this neighborhood, about 116 would be charged at the one REU and the six other homes would be charged at the one-third REU. We're here tonight on the 17th of January. Staff, if approval this evening, staff would go back and start working on final plans and specifications, have a bid opening in late March or early April, and then award the contract and start construction this spring. This will be a rather large neighborhood. We phase it into a number of probably two to three phases, which would allow us to have construction completed this fall and final assessment in the fall of 2013. So staff in this case, in this project is recommending that it's both a necessary, cost-effective and feasible for the public infrastructure and we're recommending approval of the Countryside Neighborhood Improvement Project BA 385. With that, I'll take any questions you have.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Sullivan at this point in time? Members Fray?
Thank you, Mayor. What's a historical basis for the one and a half inch water main installation on, on that hillside section? Because it sounds like an anomaly.
It's this section basically down here. One and a half inch copper water services were used fairly common back 60s and 70s and it was not meant for fire protection, it was meant solely for the service to the residents. That is something that as we're going through and rehabilitating our system, we want to try to remove as much of this one and a half inch service as possible. Reason for that one and a half inch service, that services in this case about eight and nine homes, really isn't enough water. Two, if we can keep a larger, a larger diameter in there, we have a better circulation, better flow. And that's part of our, part of our capital improvement plan, we're always looking at ways to better improve our water quality and water distribution. And then by upsizing that, we'll be able to get that. But we had a project very similar to this last year where there's a lot of one and a half inch. It seemed to be for whatever reason, this, I won't say afterthought, but these, these streets that kind of didn't really go anywhere, that while you're only servicing this many homes, we don't need to put a full water main in. Now we're looking a little bit differently. Like I say, we do want that water network to be fully developed, so that's why we're suggesting that improvement. And that would, there really isn't a need for a fire hydrant on that run, however, it would certainly, like I said, have added benefits to the fire flow for the neighborhood.
In terms of the, the storm sewer network, it, it looks like from the questionnaires at West Ridge is, I mean, it's somebody mentioned that has horrible drainage. Can you talk about more in detail about the storm water sewer network upgrades?
Certainly. Thank you, Members Fray. We'll, we'll be working on that as well. We're in the early stages of laying out a increased system. So right now, a lot of the neighborhood, some storm sewer starts in the neighborhood but doesn't get very far and is intended for a lot of overland flow back in the day. So these, a lot of these streets would have overland flow that would go for a couple, three blocks, maybe even more in some locations. We're looking to extend that network out a little bit further, which would be capture a number of intersection examples, capturing better intersection drainage up here at Hunter, also doing a little bit better to capture some of the drainage down here in Crescent and then as well over in these kind of areas, a few, few of the locations that are kind of key known areas. The goal there is extend that system out to get that water into the catch basins sooner so it goes in the pipe network instead of overland flow for certain. And then the second thing we're going to do with that is by adding additional storm sewer and we can also add an additional sump pump drain tile. I've met with a number of homeowners on the project that have, like I said, stressed that they have some backyard drainage issues or even front yard drainage issues that they'd like resolve and we're able to work with that homeowner to resolve some of those issues. At least from a city standpoint, we can resolve everything within the right of way and then some of the onus is on the homeowner to do some of the rear yard, side yard type of improvements as well.
Are those connections something that the homeowner would do independent of the project or is that something that adds to their assessment?
That is something that is not part of their assessment. It's come out of the storm sewer fund and we will run the pipe. It's usually typically three or four feet behind the back of curb and about three to four feet deep. We'll leave a connection or a service location for that individual. We'll mark it. We'll allow them to connect up to it at that time if they so choose through a building, through our, through our building department, through a permit process, or if they want to come back in six months or six years and tie into it, it'll still be there for them to use.
So the option is for the, as part of the project, for them to include the stub to the right of way and then at their own cost, make their own connection on the property?
That is correct, yes.
Okay. What about, with the tightening of the intersections, does that play into the storm water management at all in terms of reducing pervious surface?
It certainly does and that's one of the things I didn't touch on and thank you, Members Fray, is that by reducing the pavement surface out there, we're decreasing our runoff to storm wa, storm water runoff that we have. And that's a good thing for the watershed. We're always looking for ways to minimize the amount of runoff that gets to the Nine Mile Creek in this location or in, in How Creek, a little further to the north. So in this case, we're certainly very aware of the fact that whatever we can do to strike a good balance between safe travel width and reduce pavement surface to kind of get us that reduced runoff is certainly something we're looking to do.
And any, any benefit to the average pedestrian for tightening up those intersections?
From the average pedestrian, I, I think although it's a more confined intersection, I think a lot of individuals have, have mentioned that, that well, it's more confined, I can't stay to the edge. I would kind of use the flip side and say, well, those residents or the, the drivers are also going to have to be driving slower. With a very open intersection, they're able to keep higher speeds through those areas. In addition, a number of these driveways that kind of come out on these radiuses such as currently this driveway here or this driveway over here, as these people are backing out of the driveway, a car can certainly very easily come northbound right up along this edge and not have to slow down at all. It makes that, that backing out or entering the driveway a little more difficult. By having to make that maneuver, that turn, you're certainly going to have better sightlines to that individual to also be going much slower. So I think the pedestrian and vehicle interaction, when you tighten up these intersections, is actually quite a bit improved.
And in terms of curb and gutter, installing curb and gutter, can you talk about the impact of that on the pavement life expectation and on the storm water drainage?
From a staff perspective, we always recommend barrier style concrete curb and gutter and there's a number of reasons and you've mentioned two of them. One is it extends the pavement life. You're getting the water, no longer is the water running off the road and sitting at that edge. These are, as we mentioned, heavier clay, sand, clay loam soils that don't have a lot of infiltration. If we had more infiltration of sand area, it's possible that you could have that water move off to the side and infiltrate. An area like this is going to sit there and it's going to eat away at the edge of the pavement, whether you park your car over there or whether just that additional water and that subgrade to, to freeze and thaw the system. Curb and gutter acts as bookends, keeps the street together, keeps that water on the surface and directed towards our storm sewer catch basins as well. So certainly, and then in addition, we always hear a lot of people saying, well, parking on my lawn or the snowplow or someone drove over irrigation heads, those type of things are obviously eliminated when you have the curb, or certainly minimized substantially when you have the curb and gutter in the neighborhood.
Now, on, on most of the projects, it seems like the pavement rehabilitation section of the bill is more like 75 to 80%. Here, we're, we're at 50%, but, but the overall bill is higher than, than most. Can you walk me through that calculation?
Thank you, Members Fray. Yes, certainly, you're correct that in this location where this project, we have a little bit higher utility improvement costs. And those are directly attributed to some of the storm sewer improvements that we're looking to do, the water main upgrades and then some of the sanitary upgrades that at this point are still being evaluated. So I think a sanitary number may come down a little bit. There's a trunk line sewer in there that we're evaluating for the capacity. However, with that being said, you, you are correct, this is a neighborhood that does have a higher assessment cost in the $12,000 range. And the reason for that is simply the number of square yards of asphalt or the running length of the roadway divided by the number of homeowners. In this neighborhood, these are a little bit larger lots that don't have as much, so the density's a little bit lower. They're again helping to keep that assessment cost a little bit higher.
So again, part of the benefit of the tightened up intersections is you, you bring that pavement cost down slightly?
Yep, ever so slightly. And then the, actually the addition of the curb and gutter adds, or I should say, actually takes three feet off of the pavement cost as well because that foot and a half gutter that's on either side of the road, so a total of three feet, that actually comes out of the storm sewer fund and not out of the, the assessable pavement portion of the roadway. So there's a little bit of savings there too when you add in the curb and gutter.
Great, thanks.
Member Brindle?
Thank you. Josh took care of some of my questions, but I'm going to re-ask one that I just need some clarification on. So we've got a water service that it's a one-inch copper pipe or a one and a half. I've heard both. So is it the entire neighborhood or is it just a defined, a confined area? What is it now and what will it be? Thanks.
Member Brindle, the water main in question is the one and a half inch copper water main that runs on hillside, from hillside down to Valley View. That's about a, probably about 400-foot section in there. It's currently the inch and a half. We are proposing to upgrade that to a six-inch main. In addition to the main upgrades, that one and a half inch conversion to six inch, we're also recommending that all the water services to the neighborhood, so all 119 of them, get upgraded from a three-quarter inch copper services out there today to a one-inch copper service. That'd be more sufficient for the, the flows of, as these neighborhood, as this neighborhood starts to redevelop. There's a number of homes that have been enlarged out there and so our, our feeling is that that's something that needs to be done as well with this project.
Now, is there, is there information available to homeowners? Should they desire to upgrade the service from the right of way to their home while this project is going on? Is that information available?
It certainly is. We have not made that as prevalent probably as, as we should in this project. I know the public hearing you'll be talking about in a few minutes here has, we, has that very much in detail. We have a list of qualified, excuse me, licensed contractors within, that are licensed through the city and through the state and have been, have done work within the city before that all of our residents have access. We'll be able to put that on our website as well for this project. So if a resident has a question, they go to that website, has a list of probably 15 or 20 contractors who are able to do upgrade work if they so desire on their, on their own cost.
All right, thank you. I just, I just close by saying this isn't easy sitting up here or sitting out there. So I appreciate your answers. Thanks.
Member Bennett and then Members Swanson.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions, a follow-up on questions that have been asked by particularly Members Fray and that is, we had some correspondence about whether or not residents were surveyed about curb and gutter and in my experience with these projects over the last five years, that isn't included in the survey. Can you tell me why or why not?
So the question, yes, Member Bennett, is that why isn't curb and gutter a question on the question air? We actually had tried that about three years ago or so. I guess we got the answer we expected, which was the vast majority did not want curb and gutter. At the time, we questioned whether the A, they wanted curb and gutter and B, which style of curb and gutter they wanted, which was a barrier style, the more vertical face curb or the more, the surmountable, the more gradual type of curb and gutter. And overwhelming results were on every project that they did not want curb and gutter. From a staff recommendation though and from what the, the way that the council's operated since 2005 with the, with the storm sewer fund paying for some of the curb and gutter, we've always felt that, that question, although it is a good question to ask, we, we kind of know the outcome and we're still going to recommend curb and gutter in every project for some of the reasons that Mr. Fray had, had mentioned as well. So I guess that's the reason why we, historically, we tried it for a year, it didn't give us any information that we weren't already aware of.
Is my memory correct that there was in fact a smaller project in the last couple of years in which a neighborhood had surmountable curb and their request was to have that replaced with the bulkhead curb?
Yeah, we've had, certainly that's something where we've migrated away from the bulkhead or migrated from, away from the surmountable curb and gutter is that we're, we're seeing from our standpoint that it still did not alleviate some of those additional, because we talked about the, the plow damage, the people driving up and parking two wheels up on the grass, those type of issues, we're still in the neighborhood. And I think at the end of the day, the residents saw an 18-inch wide or two-foot wide white, a lighter colored concrete curb and whether it was surmountable barrier probably didn't matter, it was just the fact that there was now a curb and gutter in the neighborhood. So that's why we've migrated from surmountable or given the option to solely to barrier style.
And how is curb and gutter installed on streets that have not previously had curb and gutter? And part of the reason for my question is that one of the pieces of correspondence from a resident identified a drainage issue. I believe they're near, near that West Ridge location. And in that, in their particular instance, they were told that their yard is actually lower than the street. Will the addition of curb and gutter, how will the addition of curb and gutter address that issue?
Well, certainly that's one of the things that when curb and gutter is installed in a neighborhood like this, we take a lot of care, great design detail and to make sure that those areas are, are, are taken care of properly. And it's very difficult to match all the driveways that are out there. It's very difficult to match all those low spots and get the drainage to work. But that's something that we have been spending a lot of time on, both our projects and the projects here after this. There's a lot of survey information that goes beyond the right of way out there. Actually, even as of this past week, we were collecting data 10, 20, 30 feet up in these front yards, even some backyard, taking some shots, helping some homeowners coordinate that yes, your backyard is three or four inches lower than the street is today and will be, and so first thing we'll do, we'll try to lower our street a little bit so that the curb and gutter doesn't, obviously doesn't stick up. Secondly, we'll also look to feather the top of our curb and gutter back into the existing grade. So in some cases, you'll see they will have to go back five, 10 feet or so to make that a nice smooth transition for, for the homeowners. And thirdly, if there is any of those low areas, we're, we're trying to resolve those low areas by doing those first two things. If we can't, it was a low area that was probably there already and what we'll do with the sump pump drain tile is we have an opportunity then to potentially put another drain location there for that homeowner or to have that homeowner do it themselves. I think the individual you were referring to, I actually met on site, talked them through some of their options and then had our surveyor go out the following day to confirm some elevations. And if we put a sump pump drain tile in the, in the street right of way at about three to four feet deep, through their own separate project, through their own contractor or through their own sweat labor, they can put a system in that will have positive drainage to the street network. So they can tie in their sump pumps, they can tie in their roof drains and they can tie in that backyard area that's held water for the last 20 years or maybe has held more water recently with some recontouring of the neighborhood, the neighbors' backyards as well. So certainly take a lot of, a lot of pride and, and take a lot of time in making sure we get that right.
My last question concerns the intersection tightening. And you described one potential benefit of slowing down motorists. I noticed from a material in, near the back of the report, that actually the 85th percentile speeds on some of the streets are quite low, 23.6 and 24.6 miles per hour. On no street that was measured, does the 85th percentile speed exceed, I think 29.5 miles an hour? So I guess my, it's more in the nature of observation, but I would hope that the intersection turning radius is taken into account so that people aren't forced too far over to the side when their walking facility is the street.
Yes, thank you, Member Bennett. We, we certainly, you're right, the traffic calming in a neighborhood like this probably doesn't have as much weight as in some of the more, our, our higher speed areas of town. So, but yes, we will take into account and do take into account turning bus movements, turning vehicle movements in these areas. We have a bus template that we landed on there to see what kind of interaction that they have within the intersection. In a lot of cases in residential areas, you do build them to, to a compromise between building them so large that they're oversized 90% of the time and then building them too tight where a bus can operate through. So we try to find that, that, that medium area where we can make the two, the two work.
I have one last, last question. And that is that I under, I recall and actually brought with me tonight, the Safe Routes to School Study that was published for the city, done for the city in 2009. Am I correct that that's actually a speed zone study? It focuses more on vehicles and vehicular movement than it does on pedestrian movement? I know that walking zones are depicted, but not in existing sidewalk facilities are depicted. But if I recall correctly, the focus of this study and report was not to make recommendations about future sidewalk and pedestrian facilities, but rather to make recommendations about, again, vehicular movements and
again, vehicular movements and controls?
Yes, that is correct. You're referring to the, the Countryside Elementary School walking shed that is shown in one of the figures. It was meant to be at that time more of a, the speed zone study for the Tracy Benton type of collector streets. I did bring a graphic. If Jennifer could throw it up on the overhead here real quickly for me. It kind of illustrates what you're talking about. This is the, this is the graphic that you're referring to. Countryside Elementary Schools located here in the middle, and the neighborhood of, that we're talking about this evening is located over in this quadrant. The red line represents the walking shed that was kind of looked at with the speed zone study. The actual walking shed, when you look from a school standpoint, is a little bit larger. It encompasses the blue area. The purple lines here, again, are the sidewalk that was being proposed through the Transportation Commission, or excuse me, recommended. The red, the large, blue line is what the, is the city's understanding of the school walking shed for that elementary school.
And am I also correct that staff, members of city staff and also members of the Transportation Commission attended the National Safe Routes to School Conference that was held in Minneapolis in August of last year?
Yeah, that is correct. We had Director Hool was there, as well as some of the individuals from the Transportation Commission that were able to attend that.
And one of the conclusions from the people who attended that meeting is that we don't have a comprehensive safe routes to school plan at this time?
That is correct, that we, we have a, we have a number of pieces of information that we've done around the community. We've done some safe route to school applications, even been successful on this one here with the speed zone study. However, we don't have a comprehensive overall plan for the community.
And if I also recall correctly, there was discussion and recommendation that evening that that be pursued in the future between the school district and the city for development of that comprehensive safe routes to school plan?
Yes, that, that is correct. That would be the recommendation, that they felt that that would be a good step for the community to take, and that would set us up well for future funding applications, as well as, more importantly, the safe routes for all users, not just the, the school user, so to speak.
And what is the status of that work at this time?
That project, I'll direct to Mr. Hool, and he can talk a little more detail about where we stand with that.
Councilman Bennett, council, that's one of the many items that we have on our to-do list, and but, but when we're, we're talking about that internally, is that we would combine looking at the safe routes to school and the safe routes in the city itself as part of the pedestrian study that we want to be doing, and, and basically taking our sidewalk plan out of our comprehensive plan and updating that to, to look at all these different quadrants and routes to schools and parks and business areas in, in the city.
And that would also possibly can include some development or examination of alternate means of funding?
That's, that's correct, yes. That's right.
Okay, so at this time, that project is intended to be underway, but is not underway?
That's, that's right. Well, we're hoping that within the next few months here, that we'll have some potential examples of, if, if we had some other funding, what would we do with that, that funding for sidewalks within the city of Edina?
Thank you.
Member Swanson, do you think?
All right. A couple of questions. Mr. Sullivan, first of all, with regard to the proposed sidewalk issue, as I understand that the, you held meetings in September and October, I think, meetings in the neighborhood in an open house last fall, but during those discussions, nothing came up about a sidewalk. That was an issue that came before the Edina Transportation Commission, and they looked at this proposed project and rendered an opinion in January of this year that the sidewalks would be a good idea. So, the folks in the neighborhood really haven't had a chance to comment on that. Is that correct?
That is correct, Mayor. We have not done that. I think part of Director Hool's discussion about having a more comprehensive sidewalk plan moving forward, and maybe some of the learning curve, this was the first year that we've been through the Transportation Commission for review of these projects. I think we'll need to do an earlier check-in to make sure that the recommendation from the ETC can get presented to the residents for their feedback and honest feedback to you as, as the council in a little bit different timeframe. So, at this point, they have not been made aware of, of that recommended improvement to the neighborhood.
All right. So, if after the public hearing this evening, the council chose to move forward with the project, the decision on the sidewalk could be deferred to a later date until the public had a chance to have more participation and input into the proposal?
It certainly could. Like we stated in our cover letter, that we feel that there should be some re-notification to the residents and hold a separate public hearing then. I guess two options. One would be to hold this hearing over until they were notified of that, or I guess approve the project as recommended by staff this evening, or with any modifications that you choose, and then hold a separate public hearing on the sidewalk improvement itself. However, when it came to construction and design, we'd like to make sure that those happen at the same time so that we can get the best benefit, cost-benefit ratio on our design and construction activities out there.
Okay. I've got some good friends that I've known for years that live over on West Ridge, and it's a beautiful neighborhood, and the streets kind of, you know, meander along, and as you say, the lots are, are large. It's becoming an area where we're seeing some terrains and rebuilds. It reminds me a bit of some of the other neighborhoods that we have had in the past where people didn't want sidewalks, and this issue's been touched on briefly, but it, it strikes me that it's, it's not dissimilar to Sunny Slope neighborhood, or Kellogg-Oakland, South Harriet Park, just over here, south and east of the Country Club, where I've actually had some people tell me after the fact, gee, I wish you would have done curb and gutter. And also out in Parkwood Knolls, where they didn't have curb and gutter, and we put curb and gutter in out there. And I, have you had any feedback from folks out in that neighborhood or up on Ridge Road where they didn't have curbs before as to how they like having the curb and gutter?
We certainly get a little bit of feedback. We have started a new process this year to, after the project's complete, to kind of send out a follow-up questionnaire. And so we're starting more that data collection on the backside of projects, not just on the front side. But I think you're right, that the individuals who are concerned about the, the look or the, the feel of a new sidewalk or curb and gutter neighborhood, once it's installed, once they see the functionality of both the sidewalk and the curb and gutter, have much less concern over that once it's been installed. And I've had some, yes, that was the right decision, kind of conversations with individuals.
When you, back to a drainage issue, when you go over the neighborhood on West Ridge and you go up Crest Lane, it's, it's a, it's a pretty marked elevation change. And I'm wondering, as that water comes down off the hill and down onto the homes on West Ridge, will, will some of the things that you're proposing doing, if the council should choose to approve this project, will it assist with some of those homes that get inundated with water?
And that's part of our goal here, is to look at ways to, to help capture that water, redirect that water sooner. And we will be making a number of improvements up in that general area that you're talking about to try to alleviate, mitigate some of that. I don't think we can alleviate 100% of it, but certainly we can, we can make a movement in the, in the correct direction for the homeowners.
All right. A couple of weeks ago, we had folks here, as I mentioned earlier, from two different neighborhoods. I remember one of the neighbors from Viking Hills said, if we make the improvements, if the city decides we need to make the improvements, keep the cost down to an absolute minimum. So, the question was, really, what efforts do we make to try to keep the cost as low as possible? How do we try to deliver these projects in the most economical way?
We certainly start from the bottom up, and we do the storm sewer, water main improvements as necessary for long-term life and longevity of the, of the network. So, we're gonna minimize the costs, we're gonna balance the costs there as well. Now, that's a non-assessable item, but it's still an area that we have to dig. The more we disturb the subsoils, the more susceptible the surface soils are for moving around. As we work our way up, we have soil borings that we know, we've taken out there. So, we know what the soils are. We know the best method for stabilizing those soils, the right amount of aggregate base, gravel base, and blacktop surface. We don't want to over-design, over-build it, and we don't want to certainly, we certainly don't want to under-design it. By keeping a more of a consistent width, narrowing that up just slightly, like I said, a lot of those streets vary between 26 and 31 feet, most of them are on the 30-foot mark. By bringing them in to about 28 feet, we're gonna save two feet times all those linear footy roadway. Also moving some of those dollars from the pavement assessment to the storm sewer fund by having additional curb and gutter on the sides, or that three-foot reduction as well. It's almost taking the road in five feet when it comes to costs. Tightening up the intersection certainly is another thing we, we look at doing. And then being just, being judicial with all the other improvements. Certainly want to do what we can to make this neighborhood, you know, as good, if not better, when we leave it. But at the same token, we had to be careful on how we spend those costs, those, those assessment costs to fix, to sell into the project, get shared by the people on the north end, and vice versa. So, we want to make sure that we're doing that in a judicial manner.
Okay. Another issue you had raised earlier that, with respect to everything below the street, we'll call it, and the curb and gutter, that's gonna be, you're proposing that that be paid for by basically everybody, all of us in Edina, and that the neighbors would absorb the other 50% in the form of a special assessment. It, it makes me think about a couple of different issues. One is, what did we do back in 2005 to try to alleviate some of the financial pressure on, on folks in our community with respect to these street improvements? Why don't you comment on that?
In 2005, there was kind of a watershed moment on how the council and how the staff initiated and assessed for projects. And one of the things that changed in 2005 was moving the curb and gutter out of the accessible percentage of, or accessible column and moving it to the storm sewer fund. That's certainly number one, is one of the things that was helped to alleviate some of the costs associated there. And there was a better distribution, a better understanding of how we do an REU, the Residential Equivalency Unit. We moved from a front footage scenario where we charged on how much front footage a homeowner had, and now we charge more on a per-lot basis. That's why one of the things we talked about in early in our PCI ratings, we look for neighborhoods with similar lot sizes, similar configuration, so that it tends to be more equal distribution of the costs associated. Corner lots don't pay more than a lot internal to the neighborhood. Those are some of the things that were kind of ironed out in 2005, and we've been moving forward with a very similar policy since that time. A little bit of clarification here in September, December 2010, about a year and a half ago now.
All right. And then another associated question is, and someone raised this a couple of weeks ago, and a, and a good question and an appropriate question. Why don't we pay for the whole project that way? Why don't we spread the cost of the whole project across the, across the community? And that was a fair question, I thought. And what's, what's the policy position of the city on that?
Certainly, Mayor. One of the, one of the things that was looked at early on is, yeah, could you do that? And currently, about roughly 20% of the taxes that are brought into the community actually stay within the community for maintenance activities, parks and wrecks, no plowing. The remaining 70 to 80% tend to go out to the county, to other agencies across the state. So, we, we don't really collect that much from our tax base when it comes to the overall dollars amount. And those get spread, obviously, as you're well aware, through all the capital improvement programs that we have. So, I guess number one is that there's a very small percentage that the taxes actually go into the city of Edina. Secondly, if we were to do that type of procedure and take that, some percentage of that 20% and send it on to the projects, we would not be able to get very many projects done in a year. Certainly limit how many we do compared to the, about five neighborhoods that we're doing right now. We talked a little bit earlier about what a 35-year-old street looks like, and how much of our street is in pavement condition index rating below the 45. That number would continue to grow and continue to deteriorate to a point where I think we would have to look at some other kind of form of, of funding sources. So, I think realistically, those are probably the two biggest things. It's just using that tax base wouldn't get us far enough along, or wouldn't be able to play catch-up to the needs that we have in the community.
All right. And this is a process, this special assessment process, is a process that our community has used for decades, I believe. Some city council way back when decided that when these types of things needed to be done, it was gonna be by special assessment. Is that correct?
Yeah, and that's the pay-as, pay-as-we-go kind of mentalities and policies been used for quite some time.
All right. Sometimes folks have questions about trees in their yard that are in the right-of-way or close to the street, worry about adversely affecting the health of those trees. Sometimes they worry about pet containment. Sometimes they have concerns about irrigation systems. How do we handle those particular types of issues in the circumstances where we decide to go forward with a project?
Well, this is something that certainly comes up time and time again throughout our projects. We try to hit it early on with residents at the neighborhood informational meetings, even prior to that with their open houses, talking about the concerns that residents have. And the things that concern residents the most, quite honestly, are irrigation, pet containment, how the sod looks when you're done. Those visual aspects are things that are most impactful to your, to you as a resident in the community. And so, yes, we take great care in working through the irrigation and pet containment concerns. As part of our project, we will make those, when, if and when those are damaged, we will make repairs to those systems in a timely manner. Irrigation tends to be a little, has to lag a number of weeks because if, if we hit the system, typically we hit the system early on in the project, and there's a number of events and construction activities that have to happen in that same area for a number of weeks before we can start putting the road back together. So, we usually would wait a neighbor to four to six weeks to repair irrigation systems. We'll plug them, notify the homeowner that that system is, that zone is no longer valid, that we have a contractor on board that will fix this when the time is correct. Irrigation, excuse me, pet containment system is a little bit different than irrigation. Obviously, trying to containment of a pet is a little more critical than having that, that section of lawn irrigated. So, that's a, an area where if it was to get hit, we notify a homeowner as soon as possible, make a temporary correction, temporary connection there, get the system back up and operational. And then there again, towards the end of the project, just before they put the sod back down, we would be able to repair that system and make it a very viable, long-term system for that homeowner. And those are things that are taken care of with the project costs, so it's not an additional cost to the homeowner above and beyond what is being assessed in the project.
Okay. Another, another overarching question, I think it'll be my last question, is why are we doing this? You know, we hear you've got a 50-year-old road still that you can drive on, but why, why are we systematically going through our town and doing this type of work on our infrastructure?
Well, it's, it's a vision of, I guess, the vision 2020 of our community is to really have a, a sound infrastructure is, is a foundation for our recreation, our business, our residents. And if we don't have that sound infrastructure, both underground utilities, sanitary, storm sewer, water main, we don't have a good surface to drive on, a respectful surface to drive on when it comes to balancing bikes and pedestrians and vehicle. If we don't have the streets that, and utilities that look good and function well, then we believe that we're gonna have a problem maintaining that high level of pride and, and, well, just for our community, quite honestly. And that's something that you, as, as council over the years, have directed staff to continue to maintain and improve that infrastructure. And so, we're being charged with doing that here tonight, and this is just that program and policy that we've put in place to, to make that, to adhere to that.
Mr. Neal, one question for you. It's a follow-up, and our manager Neal, and that is, how do the rating agencies look at whether a town has a sound public infrastructure in terms of the rating that they give a community for purposes of bonding or borrowing money?
Well, it's an important component of their rating because they look at the level of deferred maintenance in a community as, as an outstanding liability in the future. It's, it's not a matter of when a city will address its infrastructure. It's, it really is a matter that it is going to happen sometime in the future. So, it's not an if, it's a when. And if you can demonstrate a consistent record of keeping track of your infrastructure and addressing it in a timely and orderly manner, it makes a difference to them, and it represents the, the management and the elective control of the city very positively with them.
All right. And just so folks know, whether it's here in this room or at home watching on television, Edina has a, what I call a double AAA bond rating. Is that correct, from both Moody's and Standard &amp; Poor's?
That is correct.
And if memory serves me right, we're one of only 36 cities in the United States under 50,000 in population that have a rating like that.
That's, that's approximately correct. It changes a little bit every day, going the opposite way, unfortunately. Less than 5%, approximately, 5% of cities in the United States have, have that rating or that confluence of double AAA ratings.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Sullivan at this point in time? Otherwise, we'll open this matter up for a public hearing. And folks, when you come up, the side podiums work well unless you have some kind of a, an overhead need. If you have, if you want to use the center podium and you have an overhead need, we'll give you a handheld microphone. Regardless of which podium you use, you'll have three minutes, as Ms. Bennerott said. We try to treat everybody equally in terms of time. We found over time that this lighting system works well, and so when the yellow light comes on, you'll have 30 seconds have 30 seconds to kind of wrap up, and, and you'll need to wrap up promptly when the, when the light becomes red in color. So when you come up, remember to give us your name and address, and welcome. Come on up, and we want to hear what you have to say. So come on. Feel free to come up. Yes, sir. I see somebody coming up.
My name is Roger Plessig. I live at 6116 Westbridge Boulevard. I'd like to address the cost of this particular project. I go back to a memo or a letter that came out from one of the previous hearings that said the estimated cost of these projects would be between $6,000 and $9,000. And now we get a statement that says it's going to be $12,300 plus, it sounds like they're going to stick us with another $1,700 for sidewalks, whether we want them or not, making the cost about $14,000 versus the $6,000 to $9,000 that we were kind of conditioned to this whole time. I have one other, or a couple of other things. I guess one is, in addition to the water and sewer, I believe we've got a gas main down that street that's probably 60 years old, like everything else. And I, I haven't heard that addressed at all as to whether that's going to be upgraded and when they tear this up. Because typically, what happens is after the city gets done, then the utility company will come back about two months later and tear the street up again. So, and then, you know, there, there's no question, our street is in bad shape. And I don't, I don't have any, any problems with, with the upgrade that, that's going on. I have an issue with the cost. And, you know, we've degraded the, the street probably by the number of garbage trucks that we got running down the street. You know, everybody's got a different service, and you've got 15 or 20 garbage trucks coming down the street once a week with all that load when it's a residential street. And, and, you know, typically, it was built for, for cars. So...
All right. Good. Those are good points, Roger. Thank you. And we'll address those at the conclusion of the hearing.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Eteishur. I live on 6112 Crescent Drive. And I was a bit taken aback by the suggestion of sidewalks. I've been to all the public meetings, and at the last one, Mr. Sullivan said that because of neighborhood opposition, the city engineer's office would not be recommending sidewalks. We also learned at that meeting that 93% of residents who responded to the survey voted against sidewalks. So if a sidewalk were put in, you know, the primary beneficiaries of the sidewalks would be the residents in the neighborhood. And in fact, I believe the justification for doing a special assessment is that the primary beneficiaries would be the members of the neighborhood, and yet 93% voted against. So, you know, I don't know, you know, how the Transportation Commission knows better than the residents, but at a minimum, you know, what would be good, but at a minimum, there's been very poor communication on this, that I could go to all the public meetings and only learn about this now. So, so again, I'd just like to say that, you know, the justification for the special assessment is that the, that the residents would benefit, and 93% voted against. My last comment has to do with, with Mr. Sullivan's comment that we don't survey residents about curbs because we know that they would oppose it. And that, you know, strikes me as just being very undemocratic and reduces my faith in the, in the process overall. So that's, that's really all I have to say.
Thanks, Ms. Sher.
My name is Robert Reed, 6223 Westbridge Boulevard. I do have some questions, again, about the sidewalk, but does the REU for Mr. Sullivan maybe now include the proposed sidewalk, or would that be an addition? And also, we have been kind of blindsided tonight about this sidewalk. And what I don't want it to do is delay the project because I think we've been told time and time again, let's get it going so you can get your bid out in April. But if we go through this extended process arguing about sidewalks, all I see is, is a slowdown in the whole project. And I think that maybe you could clarify some of the, the costs and when it's going to be, if you would, please. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Reed. Anyone else on the countryside? Yes, sir. Welcome.
I'm Tim McNamara, 6201 Crescent Drive. I think I'd like to address the process. How many years has the city known that our neighborhood was going to have to have this street reconstruction? Does, can I get an answer, or Mr. Sullivan?
Yeah, why don't, if, I'll gather the questions, and then we can go, cover them.
I understand. But I'd like to have an answer because, you know, you asked the question, Mayor, that you knew the answer to. Why don't we just do this, you know, citywide, put it into the taxes? You know, a year ago, well, a year ago last fall, we all got surprised in our neighborhood that we're going to get this assessment. And, and the previous gentleman was correct that it's going to be between $6,000 and $9,000. Well, now it's going to be closer to $14,000 because the Transportation Commission feels that, just because, I don't know how many of those members live in our neighborhood, but with 93% of the residents saying they don't want sidewalks, you know, but a $14,000 assessment, you know, you don't give people enough time to plan financially. And I don't know if you guys are business owners, or employees, or employers, if you've got kids in college. I've got two kids in college next year, and I've got a $14,000 assessment coming. And I, I think a year to tell a person in this economic time that you're going to have to come up with another $14,000 to improve the property that you own is poor planning. And Mr. Sullivan said that you couldn't get as much work done. Well, you can get the work done if you plan properly. And I think the way the city does their planning as far as generating revenue to, to do these projects, I think it's wrong. And I think it should be changed. And that's my...
Thank you. All right. Seeing no one coming forward, hearing nothing, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Moved in second to be closed the public hearing. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Carried. We've got some questions that folks have raised, and I think some good ones. And Mr. Plessig was concerned about cost variability, getting an announcement early on that looked like it was in the potential $6,000 to $9,000 range, and now it's in the $12,000 range. And if you add in the sidewalk, we're in the $14,000 range. So what can we tell them about that cost variability issue? And actually, our experience on the, on the front end, on the, on the pending assessment notion versus the final assessment, which would occur two years down the line, what, what our experience has been during these tougher economic times, as Mr. McNamara pointed out?
Mayor and council, as Jack had mentioned during the public hearing and during the questioning, is that, you know, this, this is an evolving process. And, and what we incorporated last year was a survey after we did the final assessment hearing to ask the residents what's, what works and what doesn't work. So, like I said, there isn't a, a manual that you can pick up and say, this is the way that you actually are doing a roadway reconstruction project, especially when you do 100% of special assessments on the roadway portion. What they're referring to on the $6,000 to $9,000, and you'll see it in the, in the next public hearing also, is when we send out notices to our open houses, is that we, we like to put a number into that, but, but at that time, we haven't done any, for, for say, any surveys of the neighborhood, topographic surveys or anything like that to actually do a rough cost estimate. And what, what we've learned this year is that the numbers that we were quoting, the $6,000 to $9,000, or in one case, it was $8,000 to $12,000, I believe, $1,000 on, on, on the letter, was that those are, I mean, those, those are not realistic numbers. And what, what we're planning to do in the future is to, is to give, on the back of that letter, is actually all of our projects that we've done in the last five years, and, and give the, what we would have as a pending assessment. So if you authorize to go forward with the project tonight, you'd have a pending assessment of that $12,360 without the sidewalk. And, and then we would have another column that would have the final assessment. And typically, in the, in the past few years, with the economy being what it is, and the competitiveness of, of the general contractors, we're seeing about a tend to, in some cases, 20% reduction of what we're quoting as a, as a pending assessment or estimated assessment. I don't know if that's going to change this year with all the work that's happening to the state to the west of us, where a lot of contractors are, are out in that state doing a lot of work. Oil prices affect it, overall labor prices affect it. So we, we tend, have a tendency to, to estimate the projects, not on what we've received in the prior years, but over a number of years, and what we feel is a good historical blend for estimating projects.
Can the, can the final assessment cost be higher than the preliminary estimate of cost legally?
Yes, it, it can be. There, there, according to Attorney Knudsen, is that, that there is not a limit as far as it, that it can be. But we've, I've always kept a rule of thumb of no more than 10% without going back to, to the council or even to the, to the residents. So if we do, put together the project, and we go out for a bid, and it comes, comes back extra, much higher than what we're, we're talking about tonight, we would bring it back to, to, you, you, you're the folks that actually are the ones that approve the project or approve the bids. And we've, we probably recommend that we would not approve the bids and go back and rethink the project.
All right. But our, our experience over the past few years has been that the final assessment is 10 to 20% less than the preliminary estimate of the assessment.
That's right. The other thing is that, that you have to keep in mind is when you're looking at costs, and, is that, that our assessment policy is, is 2% over what we get for bonds, 2% pays for the administrative costs. And the last year, I believe, we were 3.9%, I believe, on, is what we had for the, if I'm, if I remember correctly, for the special, final special assessments. And that can be spread out over the, over the 10, over 10 years for a repayment. So it, so it's, you know, and that's what, one of the benefits of being a AAA rated city is that we're able to borrow real cheaply and, and pass it on to the residents to do these projects.
All right. When would they, what? Oh, yeah. Well, it's, the final assessment would be two years from now, and they'd end up making their first payment theoretically three years after, from now, roughly.
That's correct. Yep. The final assessment would be the fall of 2013. First payment, if you let it go to, spread out, to be collected with your tax bill, would be the spring of 2014.
Which makes me think about Mr. McNamara's concern about, you know, a planning horizon. And I, and I think it's a good point. I noticed in other, other times we've had these hearings, you, because of the pavement condition index, you've given neighborhoods advance notice two, three years out, that their neighborhood is coming up for, for consideration for improvements. And, and did that happen here? Or it doesn't sound like it happened here.
Yep. It, it did. We, our first notice was out in 2010. And, and hearing comments from, from these past hearings is I, I believe we have to do a, a better job of marketing these, and maybe even notifying neighborhoods even sooner. The one issue that we have, if we notify too soon, is that pavements deteriorate at different rates. Like Jack was talking about the subgrades, and the city varies from a, a real sandy conditions in the southeast to, to real clay, almost organics soils in, in a, in a good portion of the city, especially this neighborhood, and to the northwest of this neighborhood. So if we go out too far, the neighborhoods could move around a little bit on the priority list based off the PCI. So, so right now, we're, we're really nailing down two years worth of neighborhoods, but maybe we need to go back to three years and nail it down and give advance notice.
Seems like it would be helpful for folks. Mr. Plessig also raised the issue of, what about some of the utility companies? They, they, when you, you've got things opened up, we should make sure that they're doing work too, at least looking at the condition of their, of their pipes and, and making decisions. He was particularly concerned about the gas line.
We, we, Mayor and council, we do notify all the utility companies when we start out this process. And we, what we do is we, we have, we tell them that you need to look at your systems, and if you're going to upgrade your systems, is to do it now because we put in a, a five-year moratorium on them cutting up the roads unless there's a gas leak or where it's a health, safety risk on it. But we don't allow them to come in and just upgrade their system after we have it because with the thought that the, the residents are paying for it. And then just once they, if they do have to, to cut it up, is that they're, they're going full wits of the roadway to, for those patches. So that, within those 10 years, you don't have a, a patch quilt-type roadway system. Now, in this, this case, I believe the gas company is upgrading their, their gas lines. So if, if you do approve the project and we go forward, that's one of the first things that the residents will see is the gas company coming in and replacing their gas mains and services to the homes. And that's, that's covered in the, in the, in the cost of, of what they're charging the residents. There, there's not a special assessment to do that, that upgrade of service. It's built into their overall rates that we all pay to the, to the gas company.
We've got 119 homes in the neighborhood, and we had four folks here tonight. I didn't hear anybody say they didn't think their street needed to be reconstructed, but they all had a concern about this sidewalk issue, which kind of blindsided them. And, and the timing of this thing, I can understand why. And as, as we talked about it earlier, this isn't anything we have to do right now without input from them and, and deal with it later. Is that, is that right?
That, that's, that's right.
After we get their input?
Yep.
Okay. And then, let's see here. Yeah, Mr. Reed didn't want the project delayed as we kind of discussed the sidewalk issue. So the project can move along in a timely manner if the council decides it doesn't want to deal with the sidewalk issue right now. Is that correct?
That's right.
All right. And then, one more thing here, then.
I'm just adding to your resonance. There was a comment about garbage trucks and the number of garbage trucks. We understand that. If you read the paper, is it maple, maple wood that just went to one garbage taller, and it almost caused a major ruckus in their city castle. We've studied this for years. We're still working on it. We have our Energy and Environment Commission working on it. We understand your concerns about multiple garbage trucks. And it's something that we have continued to work on. So it's not that we don't care, we do care. It's just hard to transition a city that's had a choice of multiple haulers and choices of different dollars that those multiple haulers charge you. It's hard to get down to one or two, but we're working towards that.
All right. Thanks. Sorry, sir, that hearing's closed. My apologies, but that's the way the rules work. So, well, other comments, questions for staff based on testimony that was taken?
I just had a few comments on the, on the cost portion because I, I looked at this, a map of the historic final levy assessments in relation to the pending. And my experience was in the last five years, 99.9% of them came in at or below cost. Staff is very aware that they need to be conservative in estimating these for the benefit of us paying them. And I'm paying my own next year. The, my survey from the, from the final levy hearings this year, I'm sorry, last November that we passed, which were projects done the year before, averaged 30% below the estimated cost. So it's a, it's a, a combination of conservative bidding on the costs plus a, a proper contingency within the number, coupled within the number, coupled with very competitive bidding on the contracts. So those two together have led to that cost benefit. And I think, you know, we can't guarantee that that will be the same number for you, but chances are good that it won't be, it'll be at or below, and probably ten to twenty percent is someone referenced here tonight. On the sidewalk communication, this kind of relates to the curb and gutter communication as well, because a few years back, we were giving an option, surveying about the bulkhead versus the surmountable. And what we found was that even though we were giving people a choice, really, we had decided the best engineering practices dictated bulkhead curb and gutter. So a decision was made to not give people false expectation that it's a choice. It's more of, that's a fixed component of the project. There are certain optional, optional elements, one of which is a sidewalk, but the choice of curb, the choice of the tuminous asphalt, the choice of pipes and so on, that's fixed by best engineering practices, and that's why we went that direction. With sidewalks, we are going towards implementing a vision of a more walkable, bikeable city. And into the future, there may be less choice available, given our comprehensive plan, which doesn't apply here, because we know that this, that segment's on the map, as well as this safe routes to school overlay that we're going to be working on. And it's, here, it's unfair, because you never got a chance to look at that plan, and we have to delay that decision. I mean, we have to take input on it and look at it more closely. We're also working on separately, on a separate funding mechanism for pedestrian infrastructure that could impact the decision as well. So just keep in mind, we are aware of your alarm about not being fully aware of this decision, so it's, we were not either. And then, in terms of the, I just wanted to comment quickly on the organized hauling, to keep you in the loop. We might, we're studying it, it's understudy, but it might not necessarily be a hauler, it might be zoned hauling, where you have multiple haulers, either by quadrant or some other subdivision. And that would cut down on the, on the beating that our infrastructure takes, as well as the quality of life issues with the noise and so on. And we will, we're going to continue to look at that issue this year, so that's under advisement, and you should see some action on that in the next year, I would suppose.
Thank you. Member Bennett?
I would like to add comment about sidewalk. Reasons why I asked the questions that I did earlier is I really do think we need policy and planning, and I think we are working toward that. I think that direction has been given. We do have funding and staffing concerns, but I really want to see us get this in place sooner rather than later, in part because of, I think we need to be clear in our message. The communication needs to be clear that as a city, we are wanting to move toward a place that provides facilities for all kinds of movement around the city, safe movement, people with strollers, people, one of my neighbors, ninety-six years old, in her own house, goes around the block with a walker. She can do that because there's a sidewalk that keeps her out of, out of traffic's way. So I, so in this instance, I don't think deferring it even a couple of weeks makes sense, because what we don't have at this point is we don't have a policy, we haven't worked with the school district to identify the walking routes that exist at this point for this school. The second thing we don't have is a funding mechanism that doesn't put it as a further assessment on these residents. I would like to see it built with the project, because I think that there are cost efficiencies, and I do think that sidewalks are one of those facilities that get used once they exist. And it doesn't have to be high usage, it's to provide facilities for all, all people in our city. But, again, the policy isn't in place, we haven't done the work yet with the school district to identify the routes, and we don't have a funding mechanism that won't charge people who don't, at this time, want a sidewalk for it. To me, it's part of the transportation system, and I think we should look at other ways of funding it.
Thanks. Just from a historical, member Swenson, go ahead, you haven't had a chance to comment.
No, I was going to make the most.
Oh, okay.
Till after you speak, Mary.
All right, thanks. I'm thinking back, a few years ago, Director Hul, two legislative sessions in a row, we went to the state legislature, along with cities like Minnetonka that, that use the general levy as a source of revenue for building their streets. We went over there specifically to ask permission to establish a street utility, so that, just like your water bill, we could build up a fund through a quarterly funding mechanism. Well, we got practically laughed out of the place when we came up with that idea of minimizing the impact on people. And I'd actually like to go back over there with the idea of a street, or a sidewalk utility, excuse me, where you might throw a few dollars a month, or a quarter into the sidewalk utility fund, and we are able then to build out a system of sidewalks all the way through our community, without being in this terrible position of, of having to face the decision of approving on a preliminary basis a potential special assessment that's ten, twelve thousand dollars, and then saying, oh, by the way, how about another two thousand dollars for sidewalks? You know, it's just, it's unpalatable for you and it's unpalatable for us. So we got to figure out a different way to do this as we, as we move forward, if we're going to, if we're going to build our city out with, in a non-motorized way and allow people to move around on foot and by bike. So, Member Swenson?
Well, I'm going to make the motion to approve BA three eight five as recommended by the engineering department, so that does not include the sidewalk.
All right. All right. I see Resolution two thousand twelve dash eighteen has no reference to the sidewalk project.
No.
And so, just to make sure that in your motion, that is specifically excluded. We're sticking with the preliminary approval of the pending assessment at twelve, three fifty.
It is.
Other questions, comments? We got a motion in a second? Do we need a, we need a favorable roll call? Roll call, please.
Member Brindle?
Aye.
Member Sprague?
Aye.
Member Swenson?
Aye.
Member Bennett?
Aye.
Mayor Havland?
Aye. Thank you, folks. This was tough work all the way around, and I know this next one won't be any, won't be any easier. So thanks for, to the folks from the countryside neighborhood for coming over tonight. Appreciate your input. I think we ended up with some real effective input on it. All right, we'll let folks from the countryside neighborhood clear the room, and then we will proceed with the next public hearing, which involves the proposed special assessment All right, folks, we're done with the countryside neighborhood matter, and we're going to proceed on now to the proposed Richmond Hills project, Richmond Hills Park project, and Director Hul.
To the council, tonight, we have another public hearing here, real similar, called the Richmond Hills Park Neighborhood. It's roadway improvements BA three eighty-eight. As you recall, we contracted out with the engineering firm of SEH to, to manage this project. I have Toby Muse here tonight, a project manager with SEH. Toby will give the presentation. We also have Paul Pascal, who's been here on a number of projects in the city, to answer any questions once you get to the question and answer period. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Toby Muse.
Toby, would you give us your last name again, please?
Muse, M-U-S-E.
Thank you.
I'm with the SEH Minnetonka office located on one zero nine zero one Red Circle Drive in Minnetonka, Minnesota. I'm here to present a summary of the project's feasibility study. This map shows the limits of the project. It's generally bordered by Our Lady of Grace School and Church on the north, the Canadian Pacific Railway on the northwest, Code Avenue on the west, Melody Lake on the southwest, and Normandale Drive on the east. The project was initiated by the city's engineering and utility departments to update aging street infrastructure. Let's talk a little bit about the project details, and we'll start with the existing conditions of the streets. The streets were constructed from the early nineteen fifties to the early nineteen sixties. Approximately forty-four percent of the neighborhood has curb and gutter. Of that forty-four percent, approximately two-thirds needs to be removed because it is in poor condition. Existing intersections at Kent and Warwick Place, and Kent Avenue, and Windsor Avenue have large pavement surfaces that create vehicle turning movements at speeds that are higher than recommended. They decrease pedestrian safety and they require additional resources to maintain. There are also, the existing street widths vary from twenty-six feet to thirty feet wide, and the underlying soils within the neighborhood are typically silty sand or lean clay soils. The photo on the left is a photo of Kent Avenue facing east, looking towards Normandale Drive, and the photo on the right is a photo along Warwick Place facing northeast towards Kent Avenue. In both photo, excuse me, in both photos, you can see the street maintenance patches that have been completed by the city to try and extend the life of the street. In fact, in two thousand and ten, the city had to install a thin overlay patch along Richmond Drive and Code Avenue, because the pavement there had essentially failed, and the city was running the risk of, during snow plowing operations, actually going through the roadway and starting to plow bituminous chunks and snow into driveways and the adjacent Next, we'll talk a little bit about the existing conditions of the storm sewer pipe. The blue areas on this graphic represent areas where stormwater runoff ponds, and the skinny blue lines represent areas where curb and gutter holds water. The green lines represent existing storm sewer in the neighborhood. And in general, there's a ridge that aligns just west of Normandale Drive, it runs in a north-south direction, and it divides runoff in the neighborhood. Runoff that falls east of that ridge travels to Normandale Drive, gets into some storm sewer catch basins there, and travels into the system in State Highway one hundred, and eventually to Minnehaha Creek. Anything stormwater-wise falling west of the ridge essentially runs through the streets, along the street edges, down into catch basins at fifty-sixth Street in both Cat, sorry, Code Avenue and Warwick Place, and also into catch basins along Yvonne Terrace. The red S's indicate location of sump pumps. There are fifty-two homeowners that have indicated they've operated a sump pump in the neighborhood, and these sump pumps likely discharge into the back or the side yards of the neighborhood and percolate through the soil and get pumped all over again. Next, we'll talk about the trunk water main and sanitary sewer pipes. You're looking at a slice of a typical home that's made with a cutout kind of right through the right-of-way line or the property line, and this graphic displays the typical infrastructure section in a neighborhood within the city. You can notice that the new street represents the proposed street that would be reconstructed, and beneath the street are all of the utilities that are shown. Trunk water main pipe is shown in a light blue color, and, sorry. It's this, this pipe right here, and it, in this neighborhood, it's six-inch diameter cast iron, and it's typically under the easterly or northerly quarter of the street. The sanitary sewer trunk pipe is the orange pipe just below that, light blue pipe, and it's typically, or it is nine-inch diameter clay, and it's typically in the center of the street. I'll discuss the service pipes and what the letters on this graphic signify on a future slide coming up. Let's talk a little bit about the existing trunk water main pipe. As shown in this graphic, there have been seventeen water main repairs since nineteen ninety, as signified by the red dots, which are main breaks, and the light green dots, which are service breaks. Trunk water main has, was never installed along Richmond Lane or along Kent Avenue between Warwick Place and Windsor Avenue. And while firefighting needs are satisfactory today without these pipes, it doesn't make firefighting optimal in these areas. Additionally, the missing pipes cause water service pipes along fifty-one oh one Windsor Avenue and fifty forty-eight Kent Avenue to be twice the recommended length. Next, let's talk about the trunk sanitary sewer pipe. In general, the trunk pipe has defects like tree roots intruding into the pipe through the joints, or the pipe itself is sagged or cracked. This is a photo looking down this, a section of pipe along Richmond Drive, and those are tree roots that are penetrating or intruding through the pipe joint walls and partially obstructing the flow of sewage in the pipe. Back to the graphic that I mentioned before, we'll talk a little bit about the existing water and sanitary sewer service pipes. One of the key elements of this graphic is the location of the right-of-way or the property line. The city owns the water service pipe up to and including the curb stop, and those are shown as segments A and E respectively in this graphic. The resident owns the water service pipe from the curb stop to their home, which is shown as segment B on this slide, and notice that segment B occurs in front of and behind the right-of-way or property line. The resident owns the entire sanitary sewer service pipe from the trunk main pipe to the house, as signified by segments C and D in this graphic, again, going through the right-of-way or property line. The service pipes in the neighborhood are the same age as the trunk pipes, so their condition is likely the same. The water service pipes are made of copper, and the city expects that the sanitary sewer service pipes have cracks and separated joints that are going to allow infiltration of groundwater and have cracks and defects similar to that of the trunk pipe, being that they're the same age. The existing conditions of private utilities in the neighborhood, there's a steel gas main and service pipe network in the neighborhood, and the electric telephone and cable TV is typically found either overhead in the backyards or out in the existing right-of-way. Let's move on to the actual proposed improvements, and we'll start again with the streets and kind of follow through the same order I just went through. The, the street widths are going to remain approximately the same, except for the tightening of the intersections that I spoke about earlier, Kent Avenue and Windsor Avenue intersection, or I'm sorry, Kent and Warwick Avenue and Kent and Windsor. Here, we'll reduce vehicle speeds and make vehicle turns more deliberate, eliminating, we'll also eliminate a potential encroachment of private property onto a public roadway, which is occurring at fifty-five sixteen Warwick Place. The city will reconstruct the street pavement thicker in accordance with their standards to ensure that the street will last and that it can be maintained. They're also proposing to recycle the existing street pavement, including the thin overlay patch that I mentioned along Code Avenue and Richmond Drive, including this thin overlay patch in our recycled wood, in essence, improve the quality and the value of the product that we get. No barrier, I'm sorry, barrier concrete curb and gutter is proposed along all streets, like shown in these photos below. Since the majority of the existing concrete curb and gutter is in poor condition, as I mentioned, it, it's more cost-effective to wholesale remove everything that's there and replace it, as opposed to trying to piecemeal sections during construction. Installation of concrete driveway aprons is proposed at all properties, and as part of this project, no sidewalks are proposed. Next, we'll talk about the proposed improvements for the utilities. Those include extending the storm sewer system up north, farther into the neighborhood from fifty-sixth Street, installing sump pump drain pipe to address groundwater flow issues, replacement of all trunk water main pipe via pipe bursting method, replacing all the water service pipe up to and including the curb stop and the hydrants via open-cut method, replacing all the trunk sanitary sewer pipe via keared-in-place pipelining method. CenterPoint Energy will replace all of their trunk gas main and service pipes. As part of the project, no As part of the project, no street lighting is included. And, with that being said, the, all the private and public utilities replaced within the right-of-way that I've mentioned leaves only one pipe, and the city doesn't want to essentially leave one faulty pipe under the street, especially when a brand-new street is being constructed and people are paying assessed, or paying money on the new street. Therefore, they're recommending replacement of the sanitary sewer service pipe within the right-of-way as well. Now, if the project is to move forward, if it's the council's pleasure to move forward with the project this evening, property owners would receive a mailing in the future, in the very new future, that would contain two parts. In it would include a memo that would give instructions to property owners and residents on how they can approach private plumbers and contractors to do this private sanitary sewer service work. And it would also include a list of plumbers that have done work in the city in the past, are familiar with the program, so that they can talk about scheduling and pricing options with those private plumbers. A little bit about preliminary project costs. The total estimated project cost is $6,583,000 in $6,583,000 in 2012. The city pays for the portions of sanitary sewer trunk pipe, the water main trunk pipe up to and including the curb stop, the curb and gutter, and the storm sewer. And residents are assessed for the sanitary sewer service pipes and the street reconstruction costs. The estimated preliminary assessments are $3,400 for the city's contractor to repair the sanitary sewer service pipe, and $13,400 for the street reconstruction portion of the project. However, now the homeowner does, again, as I mentioned, have the option of hiring a private contractor to reconstruct their sanitary sewer service pipe. And if they were to choose to do that, they would not be assessed for this portion of the project. In addition, they wouldn't be assessed for the private sanitary sewer service portion of the project if they've already reconstructed their service pipe as part of a previous project, a tear-down and rebuild, for instance. If they upgraded that service pipe, they wouldn't be assessed for that portion here as part of this project. This is a preliminary assessment map showing the project area. The graphic shows the preliminary assessment rate of $16,800 being applied to 171 REUs, which consists of the project area. Sorry about that. Technical difficulty, I guess. Okay. Now, I'll just talk a little bit about the project schedule. The city held an open-house meeting in September of last year and an informational meeting at the end of November of last year. We're obviously here at the public hearing tonight on January 17th. If the council chooses to accept the feasibility study and order preparation of bid documents, then the following schedule would be a bid opening in March of this year, award of the contract in April of this year, beginning of construction in May, completing it in the fall of this year, and then the final assessment hearing would be held in the fall of 2013. City staff and its consulting engineer believe the improvements are necessary, cost-effective, and feasible from an engineering standpoint. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Question for Mr. Muse. Mr. Paschal. You didn't mention pavement condition index, average pavement condition index for the neighborhood. What is that?
In your packets that I believe Director Hull passed out before this afternoon's meeting, the, on page thirteen of eighteen of those, the neighborhood not including Normandale Court as of 2009 had a PCI of 25, and when estimated today in January of 2012, it would be a PCI of 10, as opposed to Normandale Court itself in 2009 had a PCI of 19. And if we estimate a PCI as of January 2012, it would be a PCI of nine.
Member Bennett.
Mr. Paschal, there was, there appears to be a difference in some of the properties' characterization between the city's maps that were sent to residents with notice and your maps as part of your feasibility study. Can you explain the effect of that and what that does with our discussion tonight?
Certainly. I'm going to put a map up on the board here, Jennifer. Member Bennett, what I think you're referring to is the properties I have circled in black here, and these are properties that are duplex properties, whereas the figure in the study does not show the double addresses. So, for example, on 5120, 5122 in the assessment map, it only shows 5120. Am I on the right page?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And why that is occurring is that each of these duplexes has a single property identification number. So, the fact that it has two addresses, it does not have two property identification numbers. Furthermore, each of these units, each of these duplexes is served by a single sanitary sewer, a single sanitary sewer service and a single water service. Furthermore, each of these duplexes shares a driveway, a single driveway. So, when we look at that, and when we consider the single service pipes and the single property identification number, we have envisioned that as a one REU unit.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions for Mr. Muse and Mr. Paschal? This could be for Director Hull, too. It's, it just seems like there's so much work to do under the street here, and I looked at numbers. The proposed, or the estimated cost, looks like the city as a whole would bear about 57% of the costs, and the neighbors would be bearing about, or proposed to bear about 43% of the costs. But I think it's the most expensive proposed reconstruction project we've seen since the Country Club Neighborhood, which was, I think, over $20,000. So, I'm wondering if you could, if you could speak to why you think the numbers for the neighbors' portion of the, of the proposed project cost came in so high?
Yep. Mayor and council, if I could ask Paul to pull up the, if we can compare it against the latest, the last one that we did last summer, the Minnehaha Woods project. The Minnehaha Woods is an identical project, where we replaced the water main and then upgraded the sanitary sewer and requested that the homeowners upgrade their sanitary sewer services. They, these are very similar projects, and when we look at the dollar amounts on the special assessment, I think you have another slide that shows that when we line up the two properties, the Minnehaha Woods actually has more REUs, more residential lots than the Richmond Hills. But when you look at the bottom line, the assessments per lot is about the same. Like I say, the Minnehaha Woods was done this last summer in 2011, were proposed in Richmond Hills Park in 2012. So, when we're looking at a full water main replacement, because of the age of the water main and the breakages that are occurring on that water main, and then we're also looking at, usually when you have that, you also have a deteriorating sanitary sewer system, essentially. So, that's why we're looking at these neighborhoods and upgrading the whole infrastructure, because they're at a point where you need to upgrade the infrastructure. At some point, like the previous public hearing, at some point, they will have to have an upgrade of their infrastructure. But at this point, they didn't, we didn't fulfill that that they needed at this time because they didn't have the breakages or the sewer deterioration that we're seeing here.
When you look at numbers like this, you can't help but worry about the people that live in the neighborhood. And, one thing we haven't talked about is if we decided to go forward with this project, how would people be able to pay for this? I mean, that's been raised in several emails, you know. You can't expect us to pay for this in one fell swoop or by the month, or, you know, I mean, legitimate concerns out there about this particular level of assessment.
Right. There's, keep in mind that tonight is, would be ordering the project. There's a final assessment hearing that would occur. If you go forward with the project, and we're shooting to complete the project in 2012, their final assessment hearing would be held in the fall of 2013. But the first, if you elect to spread it out over ten years, either 100% of the assessment or even 75% or less of the assessment, that the first payment would be the spring of 2014. The other two ways of paying for the assessment is just to pay it outright, 100%. The other, the other way actually would be a deferred cost if there's a hardship of a certain age and income or other type of a hardship that would meet the hardship rule. But all those would actually would come about, like I say, during the final assessment hearing.
But people worry about it now when they see the numbers, so. And I think there were, at least, there was at least one email I saw where someone was worried about their senior neighbors. And you might want to explain this deferral program in a little bit more detail if we decide to go forward with this. I mean, people, people need to know this.
Yep, if you go forward with the project, because I would recommend that anybody that would like to look into the deferral program, as that they call our city assessor. What I can recap, and I'm not sure if Manager Neal can recap more than me on it, but basically, the deferral program is if you're 65 years of age or more and have a limited income, is that you can defer the assessment. There is other types of hardships that you can also defer for the assessment based off of income and, I believe, medical conditions and such.
And then, does it get deferred until your house is sold? Or how?
It defers until you pay off the assessment. And what happens is the interest rate keeps accumulating on the unpaid principal, and it becomes new principal every year. So, it essentially goes up fairly quickly. But that's something that some of the residents in town have elected to do based off of their estate planning or whatever, however they're planning their financials.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Yes, Members break.
I have a follow-up to the cost question. Because here, Mayor, you mentioned 43% is accessible to the residents, but the actual street cost, the 2.3 million, is only 35% of the project, and yet, the cost is very high. Usually, the street cost is 70 or 80%, and then the rest is subsurface, which is paid out of the utility fund. So, here, we have a very small portion dedicated to the street, but a very expensive cost. So, walk me through the cost basis. Is this because of the subgrade soils and there's more reconstruction going on, not at the utility level, but just the subgrade to the road itself? Or what's the cost basis?
I'm not sure if maybe Paul can handle.
Sure. The short answer is you're correct. The subgrade soils here are going to dictate a fair amount of subgrade excavation and replacement of that soil with replacement backfill. Now, towards the end of trying to keep it economized, when Toby spoke of going through and recycling the existing blacktop surface and whatever aggregate basis beneath it, where that recycled product is going to go is it's going to go in as replacement backfill. It will meet the gradations for that. So, we're going to be doing everything we can to reuse product that's on-site today into the improvement tomorrow.
So, the recycling and the narrowing of certain intersections reduces the pavement cost somewhat?
Right.
And the streets, unlike the last project we approved, the streets are not wider than normal. These are actually quite narrow streets. So, again, it's backed down to the subsurface condition that is very extraordinary, it sounds like.
There's a little more here than I'm used to saying, yes.
Okay. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Mr. Muse and Mr. Paschal at this point in time? All right, thank you, gentlemen. Stand by. We're going to open this matter up for public hearing. I think all you folks who were here earlier, I saw a few new faces drift in, but you'll have three minutes. You can use the side podium unless you have an overhead you want us to take a look at. Then we'll give you a handheld microphone, and you'll have your 30-second yellow light warning when it comes on. So, welcome. Name an address, please.
Hi, my name is Katherine Stoyan. I go by KK, and I live at 5521 Code Avenue. My husband and I closed on our house November 1st, I believe. Is that right? 2011, and on December 28th, we got a really nice Christmas present from the city of Edina. We got our first notification, obviously, that we owe essentially $17,000 for street improvements. Mind you, we purchased our home for $262,000. If you do the math, that is over 7% of the value of our home. This is our first home. It is what we consider a starter home. This starter home, we, you know, had plans. We would outgrow it within three to five years and would move on, and would be able to make maybe, you know, 7% to 10% on our home value. Well, guess what? Our entire, I mean, we might as well have rented because everything that we would have possibly made on our home will have to go back to the city with interest to pay for a street assessment. In addition, I don't understand how if I walk into a store and I am told, and I pick up a bag, and there's a price tag on it for $300, and I get to the register and someone says, "It's $1,000?" No. Whoops. My bad. Was someone drunk behind the wheel? What was going on? I mean, you can't just be that off with your math. I mean, it's crazy. It just doesn't add up. It's just plain old, does not add up. And this will financially put us in such a pinch that I don't even know what we're going to do. What if it was your daughter? What if it was Lindsay?
Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council, I'm Gerard Shannon. I live at 5033 Kent Avenue. Before I retired, I was a financial advisor to municipalities, and I was usually on the, your side of the table in talking about how these project costs were going to be financed and to give an example of what these special assessments are. I've been aware of this project for a number of years now with the initial informational hearing. And all the time, we're talking about assessments of $3,000 to $9,000, $6,000 to $9,000. I didn't go to the hearing in November because I figured it would be all the same. And I get the letter, and I find out that now, we're looking at an assessment of $13,000 to $16,000. That is absolutely reprehensible. To double the cost when you know what the underlying problems with the street are. You can consult your engineers, and you should have consulted your engineers before giving us information and then doubling it. It is, that's bait and switch. And it is not fair to us. I'm not sure that a $16,000 assessment is going to hold up. One of the things that you have to do in, under Chapter 429, you cannot assess more than the benefit, and you cannot, you cannot assess more than the cost, and you cannot assess more than the benefit. I can certainly stand here today and say, "I am not going to get $16,000 worth of benefit to my property." to my property." Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shannon. Folks, please. This, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Jane Strasnick. I live at 5400 Richmond Lane, and I have a couple of issues I want to ask. First of all, we've lived at that house for 47 years. Our house was built in 1950, which means that road is what, 50, 62 years? We've driven on the roads all in that neighborhood. And when we bought our house, Richmond Lane was still a dirt road. And my husband bought the house in July, and we moved in in September, and they're building a new road and whatever. So that's fine. All I'm saying is, all the roads around this neighborhood that we've driven on for 47 years, I see no big dips or no big bubbles. So, and all I can say is, in order to improve our roads in our neighborhoods, it seems to me that all you need to do is pull off the top and resurface it, put some more Class V down and give us a nice new pavement, and we've got nice new roads. You have people in our neighborhoods that do not want curbs and gutters. Our neighborhood where I live have curbs and gutters. You rebuilt Richmond Lane two summers ago, 18 months ago. You rebuilt it. You tore it all apart. You put new curbs and gutters on all four corners, and you rebuilt the road. There are no pipes underneath Richmond Lane. However, your new project is to put a storm sewer pipe underneath it and a water pipe underneath. The water pipe supposedly is going to give us more pressure for fire hydrants, but you're not adding any more fire hydrants. If you look at the map, and there was a drain, a storm sewer drain on the corner of Richmond Drive and Richmond Circle that could continue on down the road, on Richmond Drive, around to Code and down the storm sewer, which ends up in Melody Lake, you wouldn't have to tear up a road that you've already rebuilt. And all the taxpayers paid for that. I understand that. I wasn't assessed for that. That was considered maintenance. But we all still pay for maintenance. I have one more question I want to ask, too, because of the process of putting in a new sewer line, it's called fracking. And I want to know if my pipe that attaches to my house from my line to the middle of the street is going to be disconnected when they frac that one to put in a new line? Because what's to say it's not going to crack my pipe? I'm not having any problems, and I've got a tree on the north side of my house. I will do anything possible not to dig up its roots to kill it.
Okay. All right. We'll check on that. Thank you. Thank you, Jane.
Hi, I'm Martha Dover, and I live at 5113 Richmond Drive. I've been thinking about this for the last several weeks, trying to present, trying to come up with my thoughts and how I could present to you my feelings on this project. I totally understand that you're trying to make our infrastructure safer, better, and I appreciate that. And I understand that this isn't my area of expertise. I don't totally understand everything you're doing. But I have to tell you, almost $17,000 is an enormous amount of money. That's $140 a month for 10 years. I, too, am about to send some children to college. I'm sorry. It's just a lot of money. I know you're probably going to go through the plan. You're going to prove it, and I understand it. But I just have a couple of thoughts that maybe you could consider. Initially, when I went to the meeting, they said one of the reasons our neighborhood was so expensive is because, they said, there weren't as many homes in it as other neighborhoods. I've heard some discussion on that before, and I don't know if it's possible, but could we consider including more homes in the project to take advantage of cost savings, to spread the burden between more families? Second of all, I would ask if you would consider the reengineering of the intersections of Windsor Avenue, Kent Avenue, and Warwick Place. It sounds like, just in my learnings tonight, that maybe they're thinking it would be cost-effective because there's less concrete. But I'm not seeing why we need to redesign the streets. As far as I'm aware, there haven't been any accidents in that neighborhood. I don't believe that the neighborhoods, the neighbors are complaining, and it certainly, you know, is the character of our neighborhood. And if there could be any cost savings in that way, that would be great. Thirdly, it sounds like they're going to replace all the aprons on every single home. And could you potentially look at only replacing aprons that are damaged? I'm not sure if that would save us money. And then, fourthly, and again, I'm sorry I don't understand it, but to charge me 2% interest on top of the potentially 4% to 6% interest kind of seems like a lot. So I just ask your considerations. I know you're doing the best you can for a city, but it's an awful lot of money. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Sean Bus. I live at 5024 Kent Avenue. And I've just got a couple of questions and concerns. The first one is, my husband and another man down the street have MS and use scooters and wheelchairs. What is going to be done to help them get out and about this summer? Two, I was wondering where you came up with speeders going down the avenue and having to redo Warwick and Kent in that area and how much money that's going to cost? I was kind of upset to hear you didn't ask us if we wanted curbs or gutters because you knew the answer would be no. I think that's very unfair to just not listen to the people that live in that neighborhood. I, too, when I heard the $16,700 nearly dropped over, I don't know if you people have any idea of what you're asking there. And a lot of us seniors are, and we're stuck in what we're being paid. $140, sir, you sounded like that was a piddly amount. It's not per month and having interest. That's a lot of money to people nowadays. So I think you should take that into consideration. That's all, I guess.
Thank you, Ms. Bus. Welcome.
My name is Yuri Molyneum, and I live at 5033 Richmond Drive. And I apologize, I speak with very heavy accent.
Yeah. What's your address, Rudy?
5033 Richmond Drive.
Thank you.
So, a couple of points we already made. One point is the communication. The previous letter indicated $6,000 to $9,000, and it went up. This is borderline ridiculous. You probably know it already. But $16,000.8 is a lot of money. I have some in college, it's a couple of years still to go, but I'm still thinking. I told actually some of my friends that I'm about to pay this money, and they said, "Yeah, you live in Edina. You're supposed to pay this money." I mean, I understand it's a joke, but think about it. People expect that projects are expensive, but not that expensive. So if you can maybe take bigger portions than you already did, I realize that city takes more than half of the cost. But maybe you can take more. I mean, you have double, triple A rating. We all have it. So maybe that's an option. And the second option that I really, really want you to consider is to scale down the project. Again, I realize you would like to do more, and it probably makes sense for you. But my street, Richmond Drive, is not in great condition, but it's workable. It's in good condition, and it was redone last year or a couple of years ago. So maybe you can scale down the project and basically reduce the cost of the project. That's probably all I want to say.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Hi, my name is Margaret Huber, and I'm at 5025 Kent Avenue. I tried to assemble some of the information that's been presented online to see if there's any trends as far as how much these projects are coming in. And it does vary year to year. And not all the information from every project is available as far as what it ended up being. So in some cases, there was still information about what the pending assessment would be. But it seemed as though, as I was clicking through the website, Pamela Park, even Interlock and Circle, their assessments are $10,000. I saw $9,000 time and time again for, it seemed to be a trend. There may be a few that went up a little bit. I don't know all the names. I did find a preliminary assessment history that doesn't give me addresses or even areas, but it does give me some numbers. And there's nothing that even comes close to the $16,800 number. So I guess what I would approach the council and the mayor is that this is a hardship. This situation and how this has been assessed is a hardship for us. We are kind of a starter home community still. There are seniors there. There are, you know, people that are new to the neighborhood. And I think if there was a little more research about what this, what these numbers that the engineers have come up with, there seems to be some inequities there. And I don't necessarily know an answer, except that maybe there is a way that the city puts in more for this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Huber.
My name is Doug Erickson. I live in Richmond Hills, but I'm unlisted. I can give you my public address, but I'd prefer not to give you my residence address. Is that okay? My public address is 2200 West 66th Street, number 204, Richfield, 55423.
Thank you.
Thank you. I've talked with probably five people at Public Works about some of my concerns, and I want to let you know that I feel like I've been respected, that they've been very cooperative and helpful, but I haven't necessarily gotten answers that seem to make sense. And listening to the presentation tonight, I even have some more confusion. I came to talk a lot about just the assessment itself and the cost, but they're talking about sump pumps percolating back through the ground into the basement, which to me sounds like maybe they're going to make us tie sump pumps into this, pay for that. And my sump pump doesn't even come on. They talked about two-thirds of the gutters are damaged in Richmond Hills. I drive through that neighborhood all the time. I don't think they are damaged. As Public Works explained it, that they're going to be damaged when we have to connect to the new sewer. So they might as well replace them all. But even replacing the sewer pipe, the people that do my drain work, I asked them to do the main line from the house to the sewer. They said, "Don't. It's a waste of time. The sewer pipes in this area are too strong. Roots don't get into them." So I understand there's a process by which videos can be done to see if the sewers have to be replaced. And I'd like the council or the city to supply us more information on what that means. But as far as the assessment goes, to compare us to Country Club and Minnehaha Woods, I think you're talking about a definite income difference and property value difference, and yet the assessments are the same. I don't understand how the $6,000 to $9,000 basically doubled when the city's been doing this for seven years. It's not like this is a first-time guess. You've been doing this for seven years. You've had the prior experience of Minnehaha Woods and Country Club. And so then to come up with 100% error doesn't make sense to me. And I think that if any of you were having additions put on your house, and the contractor all of a sudden said, "Well, the new estimates are 100% more than what we told you they would be," you'd ask for an evaluation of what's going on. And I would like to ask the city to do that, the council to do that, to get an independent evaluation of why this project went from $6,000 to $9,000 up to $13,000 to $16,000 and to let us residents know.
Thank you, Mr. Erickson.
Hi, my name is Alyssa Mulver, and I live at 5005 West 56th Street. And my husband and I, like KK, bought our house about three and a half years ago. And again, we talked about that it would be about $140 a month, and that is a hardship, a definite hardship for somebody that is a new homeowner to pay $140 a month. And this is not Country Club. This is not the Country Club neighborhood. We have very working-class neighbors. I mean, most of my neighbors are teachers like myself. We make $45,000 a year. That's not that much when you're considering that you're going to have to pay $140 a month for the next 10 years. That's a lot of money. The other thing that had been brought up was how many cars go through those Kent and Warwick and then the Kent and Windsor intersections and looking at some cost savings there. I think that that would be wonderful. How much does it cost? And would that cost monetarily outweigh the benefits of narrowing that intersection? I propose that this doesn't go through and saving us some money or finding alternate ways to pay for this project that doesn't create a hardship for the residents. Thank you.
Thanks, Alyssa.
Hi.
Welcome.
I'm Margie Dahl, and I live at 5009 West 56th Street. And I have been at every meeting that they have let us in on. The transportation meeting that I was at in December, where they recommended no sidewalks, they also recommended painting a crosswalk at the Kent and Warwick area and the Kent and Windsor area, and I have not heard any more about that. But I will tell you that I had a little tongue-in-cheek sarcasm, and I brought my family there. And we stopped in the middle of that intersection, and I said, "No, children, you need to be very, very careful. This is such a dangerous intersection. They are actually going to paint a crosswalk here so you can get across the street safely." I'm sorry I'm being sarcastic, but there are no cars. It's ridiculous. I have been walking this neighborhood for years and years and years, and there aren't any problems. You know, when we have an elderly person and a five-year-old wobbling on their new two-wheeler trying to get towards each other, if you're on the street, you know, they can kind of go around. But if you're on a sidewalk, who's going to go on the grass? There are more problems that way, or the dog leashes that get in the way. But my main concern, people keep saying that this is a financial hardship, and it is. And the figures that they keep saying are the $16,800, but that does not include the private plumbers. And that's a whole nother addition. And, you know, Martha Dover, I agree with you. You know, our Edina teachers, government teachers, have asked their students to come to these city council meetings so they can get a peek at how city government works. And I have noticed that the council members are asking questions of which they already know the answers to, and the public who have read the information that's been sent to us already know the answers to. And it seems like you already know what you're going to vote and that you're just being nice to let us voice our opinion. And I don't think that the students are learning good government that way. So I am a little bit disappointed with the students that had to come and see this today.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Susan Aronson, and I live at 5103 Windsor, which is the intersection of Kent and Windsor. And we just bought our house there two years ago. We moved from West Edina, where we had gone through the whole assessment process before. And so when we bought this house, we stopped at City Hall and we said, "What are we in for?" And they said, "2017." We were slated in our little neighborhood here. So we made our offer on our house according to that. And we got the letters, and, you know, we just figured this is what we're in for now. We were a little surprised at the price. But I do want to comment that our little intersection is not real busy. It's very charming. And if they're going to modify that, I don't see And if they're going to modify that, I don't see that as money well spent. And I think the other intersection is the same. We're all kind of, you know, it flows very nicely. We don't have a lot of busy traffic or speeding cars, nothing like that. So our house was built in 1940. I think probably sanitary sewer, all that stuff is due to be upgraded in our little place. But we've just, we bought our house knowing we were going to fix it up and we've been, we put $30,000 into it and now we'll probably stop so that we can start paying for our assessment. So, you know, it's a great neighborhood and I just wanted to let you know how I felt. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Aronson.
Hi, I'm Lucinda Winter. I live at 5532 Code Avenue. And I'm absolutely supportive of improving infrastructure and replacing infrastructure as maybe. I do have issues with the costs and I understand that what we need done in our areas, you know, it's more hefty, there's more that has to be done. But just to put perspective on what other people are saying about the 142 weeks month, if we spread this out over 10 years, it is a, and that doesn't even forget the financing. I didn't calculate that. It's a 50% increase in my annual property taxes, based on my property taxes right now. It's 50% more for the next 10 years. So that's just, I think, a different way of looking at what we're being asked to pony up here. Not that I think it's completely, I'm in support of it, but I'd love to see, I'd love to see maybe another spin around looking at whether this maybe, I don't know, is it a two-part dance we have to do? Is there some other way that we can make this more affordable for people?
Thank you, Lucinda.
Hi, I'm Dick Straznik and I live at 5400 Richmond Lane. And there's some issue that I could probably put some light on. Richmond Drive is the first street after Our Lady of Grace. And they're talking about the traffic on Windsor, Warwick, that area there. There is none. There is none. And you know why there isn't any? Because they make the turn on Richmond Drive and they go up through Code and they go around Melody Lake and we don't have a problem. And there must be somewhere that you have the statistics because you had a counter on those streets over there. So you would know this if you checked your own files. Now, about cost-saving, I have been very respectful of Public Works for years and years and years. I've said, "You know what? You in Edina have made a mistake. You should send your tax statement out right after a snowstorm for the way the streets are taken care of." But I do have an issue with one thing. You take Richmond Lane and you go down Richmond Lane to Code and all the way up, that's seven tenths of one mile. And I drove it off tonight and that's the equivalent of going from Wooddale to the Holiday Station up there. And 18 months ago, you tore that out, you resurfaced it. It was not in that difficult a shape. Also, in the middle of Richmond Lane, between the homes, there's a concrete mass that has been put in there at the request years ago of the man that lived there, Babe Lavor, because there was water issues coming from these homes along there. It took care of it. But guess what? You not only took the blacktop out, you ripped that concrete out. There wasn't a crack in it. There was no dispiriment to it at all. And now you're going to do it again 18 months later. That's not cost-saving. And Mr. Sprague, when you came to my house and you said, "You vote for me, I'll be in your corner," now I want you in my corner. I want you to check these things out. I want you to check out how much wasted money there was on seven tenths of a mile of blacktop. End of story. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Straznik.
Hi, my name's Dina Scholl and I live at 5032 Windsor Avenue.
Would you give me your name again, please?
Dina, D-I-N-A, Scholl, S-H-O-L-L. I went online to the Edina site and researched all the other projects of previous years. It's hard to get a lot of valid information. It's, well, you know, it's not necessarily final information I'm looking at. So I went over the different, all the PowerPoint presentations that I could go through. And I noticed ours was the only one that was actually City Edina and SEH. So I'm just, my question is, is our project the only one that was done on someone else's behalf, you know, presented to the City of Edina? And just to compare our project to Mini-Ha-Ha, I understand it's probably a very similar project, but again, the house values between our neighborhood and their neighborhood is hugely different. And we are, you know, a starter neighborhood. And to expect us to pay almost $17,000 for, you know, a project that is very difficult for many of us to do. Thanks for your time.
Thanks, thanks, Dina.
My name is Elizabeth Shannon and I live at 5033 Kent. And I'm not going to ask any questions about the costs. I'm going to ask if any considerations were given to lighting. We don't have any lighting at all on our street. It's terribly dark at night. We have young children in the neighborhood. We also have seniors in the neighborhood. And there wasn't any discussion about lighting. So I'd like to know what sort of consideration was given to that by the engineering department in their assessment. Thank you. Because we really need lighting.
Thanks, Elizabeth Shannon.
There's a gentleman back here who was coming forward and then stopped.
I have the same question.
Oh, all right. Thank you.
I am Don Redding at 5017 Kent. I'd like to just voice again, you know, that I agree with all the people that there is no traffic down at that intersection of Kent and Windsor. In fact, you're likely to break up a ballgame in the middle during the summer. And that's true. And you can stop and play with them. And I've never seen an issue there. But I'd also like to know if, you know, can, with this proposal, can we look at voting on, do we want curb and gutter? And what's the incremental cost of doing that? Is there, you know, if the streets lasted pretty long on Kent without having that, you know, is there some cost savings there that we could do that again? You know, if we get 35 years out of it, you know, maybe that's the right thing to do. So I guess that's the kind of breakdown I'd like to see. And also if, you know, the payment, I understand, would be the spring of 2014. But if that's 100% payment, is that when that would be due or is that when payments would start? You know, what kind of interest rates are they looking at? Just some of those kind of facts.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We can get that for you.
Hi, my name is Laura Gertsen and I reside at 5029 Yvonne Terrace. And I agree the costs are higher than anticipated. I understand the need for street improvement. I have a feeling what's going to happen tonight. I understand the council and I appreciate what the City of Edina is trying to do for us. So on a different aspect of it, what I'd like to know, is there any value engineering that we can get done for the project? So if we are paying close to $17,000, that we can actually see more of the results? Can we look into options for lighting? Can we look into options for traffic calming if that's what people are wanting? Some of the drainage issues where we do have sump pumps coming out onto the property, I noticed in the survey, 90% of the people said they wouldn't pay extra money to tie it in to the underwater, under-street option that the city is giving them. That's because they don't want to pay for it. But as a resident and a neighbor, I don't want a brand-new street and having everybody else's not make the choice. So can we, I'm not asking for a bone to be thrown, but in a sense, if we are paying $17,000, can we see what we're getting for it in terms of details rather than just another street? Can we do value engineering and can we look into some more of those details for what we're going to get? Thank you.
Thanks, Laura.
Good evening.
Yeah, Keith Thompson, I live at 5017 Richmond Drive. And a lot of good points have been made tonight so far. And I think the, you know, the price is a major issue for everyone, but the funding structure, and it's been alluded to a number of times during discussions tonight, but I think a comment was made earlier in the evening about that a long time ago, I don't know what the definition, a long time, if that was 20 years ago or 10 years ago, about that the city council made the decision to do this pay-as-you-go approach. And if it was 20 years ago or 30 years ago and they made that decision, that probably made a lot of sense when a very small percentage of the city infrastructure was wearing out. But now Edina's aging. It's, a lot of the infrastructure is coming due, the maps that were presented illustrated that. And to continue with the pay-as-you-go, and I'm sure the city council would rather not have meetings like this where a lot of very upset people are talking about getting bombarded with very high payments that are unexpected. And to continue with the pay-as-you-go approach probably needs to be scrapped because it doesn't make sense. Because, you know, I don't want to use the term fair because fair is a term that gets misused and overused. But when you've got a situation where the entire city, for the most part, is going to require this work to be done, that they should consider modification of that funding approach. This is just too much to drop on individual households. And even a 10-year funding strategy is too short. So that's what I want to bring.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson.
Hi, I'm Karen Marshall and I own the property at 5524 Richmond. And we've owned it for about 10 years. And the curbs, we have curbs and gutters and they're in fine condition. And we don't have a sump pump. The water and sewer work fine. So, you know, everything's in good condition, basically. And to have to pay $16,800, and in the end, all I'll really have is, I mean, I realize we have to upgrade the water and sewer at some point in time, but right now it's working fine. And I always thought assessments were something that would improve the value of your property. And there's no way this $16,800 is going to be added to the value of my property. And just to reiterate, as well as many people did up here about our neighborhood being compared to Country Club is sort of laughable. I mean, this is a starter neighborhood. The prices of houses are a fraction of what they are in Country Club as are our salaries. And I don't really understand, maybe you can reiterate, how you said Edina is, pays for 53% of it and we pay for X percent of it. Is that something that's negotiable or you can change or is that just how it is set up? I don't really understand how you came up with what percent we pay versus what percent you guys pay. Thanks.
Thanks, Karen.
My name is Jack Heffernan. I live at 5105 Windsor Avenue. And a little of my speech has been taken away by some excellent comments this evening by the number of people that have been up here. But I would like to add a few things maybe that are a little different. I went to the first meeting and I went to the second meeting. And quite frankly, in talking to several, eight other people who are at those meetings, the presentations were made a little bit, if I may use the word, arrogant. We were kind of told. At the first meeting, two people wanted to ask a question, they were told, "We'll talk to you after," and I'm not too sure that was taken place. Now, what I would like to say is, I feel that this total project should be redone, relooked Be expensive. Edina has the money. And you people, Mr. Mayor, and you people sitting there, I find it hard to believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, this presentation that was made this evening is the first time you've seen this, Mr. Mayor?
First time we've seen this project?
No, the project that the people presented. You, am I making myself clear? You are not, you're aware of the project, Alice, but I mean, the details, the nuts and bolts of it?
Correct.
You have not seen it?
Correct.
Am I correct in saying that you're going to make a vote this evening on this project?
Possibly.
And?
Yeah, I suspect we will.
This is the first time you've seen the nuts and bolts of it? I find that unacceptable.
I didn't, I didn't hear, I got...
And one other comment I'd like to make, the gentleman that presented about the water lines and the sewer lines, is all the project that we're looking at in that bad a shape that we have to redo all the water lines and all the sewer lines? Obviously, you have to do that. You don't do the road, you know, and then not, because if you do the road and all the sewer lines and the water lines that are underneath it are shot, obviously, that's an insult. That doesn't make any sense. We all know that. My question is, are all the sewer lines and water lines in the project that you presented in bad shape? Was any construction gone and done on all the streets that we're talking about in this project? Or was just spot-checked? And so it all needs to be done?
All right. I got that question.
That's a question, yes. All right. So in ending, I think the total project should be reevaluated and looked at. And enough has been said as far as the, what the assessment is. It's unconscionable. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Heffernan.
Chris Raffetall, 5037 West 56th Street. You know, I think the bummer here is that you're, we're kind of stuck in a quagmire now because essentially depending on where you live within this neighborhood, you're caught kind of pitting neighbors to neighbors. And we do have problems with our streets. If you look out in front of our yard, we do have low spots, we do have flooding, we have no curbs and gutters, we have people driving on our yard. So you, you come into the process fully, at least we did, my wife and I came into the process fully in support of the whole thing. And then as the process has developed, it's become more and more challenging because you have situations where you have obviously people that are against it. So what I want to make sure doesn't happen, in my opinion, is that we kick this thing down the road. Because we've seen what's happened when we've decided to forego. Street projects and neighborhoods have come back and said, "Guess what? We actually want to have it done now and it costs more." So before you make a unilateral decision, yes or no, maybe there's value in taking a look at the economics of it again. Maybe there's a value in taking a look at some ways that we can, we can scale it back. But if we kick it down another one or two years down the road, essentially, it can become more expensive for everybody. And at the end of the day, nothing's been done for 50-some years in that neighborhood. Something has to get done. We just would like to see if we can find a way to make it more palatable. But at the end of the day, if it goes forward, we're in support of it because it has to get done. It's a tough nut to swallow, but that's where our, our family stands. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Raffetall. Anyone else? Okay. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
They moved in second to be closed the public hearing, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Prose say nay. Carried. Okay. Member Bennett?
In answer to one of the questions, and when do the council see this? We get a packet delivered to us every Friday evening that contains a lot of information and all of us spend a lot of time studying. I tell people it's like cramming for finals twice a month. And I understand that you've had information and been part of discussion. Some of us have heard about those discussions as they've been ongoing. There also have been things evolving. And so all of the technical information, all of your correspondence, all of the answers that you've given to surveys get delivered to us. And we take all of that information really, really seriously and try our very best to use that information in addition to everything that we're hearing this evening in making the decisions that we make.
Members' question?
There were a number of questions that kind of came around the same thing. And what it, the gist of them were, is there a way to cut the cost by not doing the intersection at Windsor and Warwick and Kent? And...
And really, the majority of that cost is putting in the concrete curbs and gutters. And that isn't borne directly by you. Obviously, it's borne indirectly by you, because you all pay a little bit on your sewer bill every quarter when you pay your water and sewer bill. So, everybody in Edina helps with that part of it. So, aprons on driveways, that's not something that you're paying directly in your assessment. Curb and gutter, you're not paying directly in your assessment. So, there were a number of questions that way, as far as would those be ways to cut costs? Lighting, additional lighting is probably not a way to cut costs, because currently, that's not built in to this, and so, if we added lighting, that would increase the cost. Do you want to start your list of questions? You take notes?
I can.
Yeah. But there were about five that kind of hit that.
Members Sprague, go ahead.
I just want to follow up on process here. It's an organic process, it evolves. Public hearing is very important. I think I've learned more from every public hearing that I think makes the overall project the best it can possibly be. And I've always said that residents are the best people on the ground, give us the information, because you're living there, you're walking there, you're observing, and we need that factual data in making the decision. It's not predetermined. We need to ask questions of staff, we need to have you ask questions. And sometimes, we have to ask questions that inform our viewing audience about other issues related. This is not our first rodeo in approving projects. There are certain policy issues surrounding, and funding issues surrounding, street reconstruction projects, that we have to make sure you're informed about. So, when I'm asking a question that I know the answer to, it's to inform the public sitting right in front of me. I can't assume that you know every possible facet about street reconstruction projects. I'm trying to help you understand the entire picture before we make a decision. And then, the rest of the questions, because there's so many different expertises that come together, engineering, planning, fiscal policy, traffic management, stormwater management, there are a lot of technical questions that have to be answered as well by staff in this process. And so, I just wanted to give a little bit of background of how the decision-making process, and what's the role of the public hearing and the public, and why we ask all these questions, some of which we know the answer to.
Thank you. Yeah, I agree, there's an educational component to it, and it can be handled in part through a Q and A, and questions that we do indeed know the answer to, but it's beneficial to folks that I think that are sitting in the audience. Ms. Marshall asked about how did we get that 57-43%? And the materials that we received, I made a quick calculation of the amount that the community at large, you folks included, us included, would be paying for the work basically under the street and the curb and gutter, and that was roughly 57% of the total project cost. And then, the other percentage then, that fell to the neighborhood for the street special assessment, potential street assessment, was 43%. Remember, Sprague recomputed that when he took out the amount of money for connecting the sewer from the main line to the house, and I think he came in at 35% for the street improvement project.
But it's different for every project.
Right. And my point was that this is a project where we're seeing actually more sort of broad citizen participation in fixing what's underneath your streets in your neighborhood than we might normally see. Usually, we see 50-50 situation, so it's slightly better. Mr. Shannon is right. He did this kind of work for years, that the, these are what are called Chapter 429 projects. They cannot be assessed for more than the benefit of the project. And Director Houle, you may want to speak to that and the process we went through in 2005, to make sure that the special assessments matched up with the increase in the property value.
Yes, Mayor and Council, in 2005, the council relooked at the way that we were assessing projects, and came and actually formulated our policy on local special assessments. During that process, we looked at, or staff looked at, ways of spreading this across the city, and we looked at different dollar amounts, which I don't have tonight, but what it came up to, and what the council decided at the time, is that those dollar amounts, that they went past them on, because it would have really increased the levy quite a bit. If I recall, it was even more than $140 per month on that, I believe, for home, which would have been spread across the entire city. During that process, was that we double-checked to make sure that we could special assess at 100% the roadway costs, and we actually hired a consulting firm to do an analysis for us. And they did an analysis and looked at a number of different cities that use that special assessment as a tool, and came up with that, that yes, we would stand up if we were to continue doing our special assessments the way that we had been doing them in prior years of 100% to the roadway costs.
As I recalled, the curb and gutter cost at that time was determined to be about 25% of the total project cost, and we decided that, based on the information that we got, we could move that into the utility fund legally without worrying about it, and spread that cost through the whole city. But nonetheless, these assessments or proposed assessment numbers have been climbing ever since. So, Ms. Strutnick raised the issue of why not just resurface it? And I don't know, do you want to answer that question, or if you want one of the...
One of the tools that we have in the city is, we do have an asphalt budget for maintenance of roadways. Part of that is just to kind of limp through a lot of these streets. If you recall, when Jack was showing the numbers of roads that are 35 years of age and older in the city, a lot of times, what we'll do is, we'll do a thin overlay on roads that we feel that, that in the next year or so, is that during the spring thaw or the winter cycles, that is that our snowplow trucks will fall through, or also plow up the pavement itself. And so, that's one reason why we do the thin overlay, and one is that we just, we don't have the financial capacity or the staff capacity to do more projects, even though our need is greater on the projects. And so, it kind of helps us kind of limp through till we can get to these different neighborhoods. The one thing is that we've, that we're seeing, though, is anytime you do a mill and overlay on an existing roadway, is that within a year, the cracks that you see are propagating right through that thin overlay. So, it only buys you a couple of years, essentially, to apply that. And so, when you look at the cost benefit of it, it doesn't really hold up to spend that amount of money, just to limp you through for a short amount of time.
In terms of Richmond Lane, where was mentioned here specifically, what was done there, and what was the expected lifespan? And Ken, I know that the asphalt will be recycled there. Do we also reuse curb and gutter and aprons that are structurally sound?
Yep. What was done there was the, a thin overlay that was placed on that area. The asphalt, when we bid out a project, we don't recycle it right on, right within the neighborhood, but what the economics that we have in the metropolitan area that we live in, is that they actually recycle the asphalt. So, they'll, in some cases, they'll grind up the asphalt in place and use it as haul roads, or mix it into the Class 5 for the project. Other cases, they might haul it out, depending on how much money that the contractor can get, and we realize that in savings when we're doing the project. The concrete curb and gutter will be shipped out, crushed somewhere, and reused somewhere else, and probably in the metro, but that all calculates into the cost that, when they bid out the projects. Because all these projects are bid out to an open bid system, a public bid, and then we look at the lowest responsible bidder. So, it's a competitive process. And so, they, right now, the way that the industry works is, they have to recycle to be competitive.
And in the Richmond Lane circumstance, were you concerned about a breakthrough, catastrophic failure of the surface through the maintenance activities, and therefore required this immediate mill and overlay?
That's right. That's what, when we do a thin overlay, and there's been a lot of thin overlays done in the west side of Edina and such, is that it's basically to hold it together till we can reconstruct the roadway.
And that's not a unique section that's done, that's done throughout the city, throughout the entire year?
That's right.
Miles and miles of road, not just that particular section?
Well, during the warm months, when we can apply the asphalt to it.
During the season for doing that, okay. Thanks.
Thanks.
There was an issue with the first speaker about when notice first went out. The first letter went out September 7th of 2010. So, obviously, for anyone who lived there, you've got this letter. If you bought there after that, the person that you bought from already knew that you were going to have road reconstruction this year. I'm not a real estate agent, I know you can look it up.
On the purchase agreement, you have to disclose to the buyer whether you have or have not received notice of a new project. That's a statutory obligation on the purchase agreement. In addition, the city maintains a map that is now listed, projects 2011 through 2019, public information that you can see all the different projects coded by year. That project has been on that map for at least two years, and that information just wasn't disseminated to you, you didn't get a chance to look at that.
All right. Ms. Strutnick also was concerned about the sewer line to the house. Her question was, will it be fracked? And I think her underlying concern was, how come you sure that there won't be any damage if her line is replaced between the house and the main line?
Actually, I think I'm going to refer that to either Paul Pascal or Toby Moose.
And she's got a tree she's concerned about as well.
The process of sewer fracking is not what's going to be in place here. What we're looking at is trunk sewer pipe reconstruction by cured-in-place pipelining, where the liners are installed through existing manholes, and they react with hot water, and they become hard, so that they become a structural liner inside the existing pipe. So, the host pipe, we'll call it, the pipe that's in brown today, is not damaged. Then, when the service to the home is reinstated, it's reinstated by running a saw, a robotic saw down the pipe from the manhole, and cutting open that opening again, so that effluent can pass from the house. So, there would not be damage to the sewer service pipe by trunk sewer pipe reconstruction.
All right. Just also reminded me that, before I forget to start, Mr. Erickson asked about, you know, how do we know that everybody needs their sewer line replaced from the house to the main line? Why wouldn't we want to run a camera in there to make sure that you don't have to spend $3,500 or $3,700 or $4,000 unless it's absolutely necessary?
Right. Wayne, would you like to take that, or shall I?
No, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. The answer to that question is that, as part of this program, as we pointed out, the sewer service pipes are about the same age as the trunk pipes. So, the condition we're seeing in the trunk pipe, where we have camered, and we have noted the defects in each segment of pipe, it is very reasonable to assume, based on past experiences, that the sanitary sewer service pipes are in the same condition, had they been, had no upgrades been performed since the house was built. Towards that end, we want to get after the pipe that's in the right-of-way. We don't want that pipe to be the only pipe out there that has not been upgraded. Now, the program, remember, is only from the right-of-way line to the trunk pipe that we're going to be replacing the sanitary sewer service pipe. Anything beyond the right-of-way line, we're encouraging the property owner to do it, but they can have their own plumber come out, they could TV that pipe, they could decide that their pipe in that stretch is fine, and they're not going to do anything. Indeed, that was the case in a lot of the homes in the Country Club, some of them in Minnehaha Woods. And they just worked from the right-of-way line to the street, and many of them just let the city's contractor do that work. The way that this program is probably going to shake out is that the plumbing companies are going to give, the private plumbing companies are going to give better deals to the property owner to either do the work between the trunk pipe and the right-of-way line, or they're going to make it effective enough that they're going to want to do the, they're going to want to do the whole pipe to the home. So, that element of TVing the sewer is going to happen, but it's going to happen probably by the private property owner taking a look down their own service pipe. And the plumbing companies that we've been working with in Minnehaha Woods and in the Country Club, many of them are offering a TV inspection as part of their free estimate. So, it's, I'm sure, rolled into their cost if you sign up with them, but at the time of the estimate, those inspections are free. And those inspections occur from the house out to the trunk pipe.
Just as a follow-up to that, in Minnehaha Woods and Country Club, I know that some neighbors pulled together to do a group of sewer lines from the house to the right-of-way. How do we help coordinate that effort? I mean, I remember in Minnehaha Woods, we went through this, where the contractors needed certain information. Does the city stand ready to assist in that process, and how are we going to coordinate?
In the case of the woods, there was, there were two property owners, one that lived in the east portion of the woods, and one that lived in the west portion, that took it upon themselves to organize the neighborhood, west and east. There, as far as I recollect, there was no city involvement in trying to pull that together. That was property owner-driven.
Right.
More providing the data, remember, they needed certain maps and so on. Can we facilitate the data if necessary?
Absolutely. In that case, we gave them the maps of the sanitary sewer services, so they had everything that they could then work with, different plumbers to acquire prices, if the other residents wanted to join in on that also.
I know, in the woods project, we had a woman who was in the hospital and coming home in an ambulance, and what had to happen for her to be able to get in her driveway, and what was done, and I've read the report on it, it was amazing. But we have the buses who are worried, because they need scooter and wheelchair access in and out, and they're concerned about that. So, can you kind of talk, if this project goes forward, what that day-to-day communication is, so that they know what happens, and what the contractor does to make sure that they can come and go, and that they have warning ahead of time, and they can communicate their needs?
Certainly. The process begins, actually, during the bidding process. In the specifications for the project, we would, with property owner approval or permission, list that address as a house that has mobility concerns. So, all of the contractors would be alerted that, "Look, part of your mobilization cost into this project is going to be dealing with these property owners that have to get in and out." So, if you have to build gravel ramps, if you have to build plywood sidewalks, whatever the case may be, it's going to be included in that mobilization cost. Now, once we go to construction, it's brought up at the weekly construction meetings, and we have an inspector on site who is overchecking with them, usually on about a weekly basis, on average, Toby, as to what's coming up this week. Because some of the mobility folks also have oxygen deliveries or medicine deliveries that need to get through. So, we want to make sure we're keeping abreast of that weekly, and then that becomes a standing agenda item at the weekly construction meeting, so that there are no surprises.
Okay.
Thank you. Ms. Dover, you know, said that she totally understood the goal you were trying to achieve here, and I think she spoke for a lot of other folks, that, you know, said it was almost $17,000, and that equates out to $140 a month in a rough sort of way, over 10 years. Manager Neal, I'm wondering, considering the potential cost of this project, is there, would there be some, if the council were to approve this project, would there be some way between now and final assessment to look at whether or not we could extend the payback period to assist in some way the folks in this neighborhood?
There is, Mayor and council members, yes, sir, we can look at that between now and the next time that there's an action on this, or even before the next council meeting, because we do have a two-week break here instead of just a week. But there's no statutory limitation, well, there are some statutory limitations, but 10 years or 15 years certainly fit within that structure.
I know that one consideration in the past has been some advice from our financial director, that the rating agencies like to see nothing greater than a 10-year on a payback period, but nonetheless, you know, there are some compelling circumstances here that make one think about, if this were approved, maybe looking at some way to make it easier to deal with the financial impact of it. So... So keep, thank you for that information. There were, this may have been answered, but I mean, there were several folks that raised this notion of reengineering Kent, Warwick, Windsor. You don't see any need for the redesign. Would that, if we didn't do anything with that intersection, would that help with the assessment at all? Someone talked about value engineering. I think we should, we should deal with that issue as to whether or not this could potentially affect the level of special assessment.
Sure. As Member Swenson pointed out, the majority of that cost is in the curb and gutter and that's paid for out of the storm utility fund. In this engineer's opinion, replacing existing paving, replacing existing paving with grass is a lot cheaper than replacing existing paving with paving. So relative to cost savings, that is a additional factor that throating these intersections down provides.
Okay, thank you. Someone raised the issue about interest expense. Wayne, and I thought that you should get a clarification on, or Manager Neil, on how interest gets computed or levied on a potential special assessment?
We do a, we sell revenue bonds that are secured typically by the special assessments that are levied in a situation like this. And we mark up the interest rate, that whatever we receive from the market, whatever the net interest rate is on those bonds. Our custom here has been to mark, increase them by 2% to cover the city's financing and processing costs and then pass along that new interest rate on to the residents as part of their financing.
In your recollection, Wayne, was that last year or last round of assessments, it was under 4%?
Actually, last year's roadway projects were 4.3%.
Thank you.
There's a little, there was a question about the payment and when it starts and what it is. So, spring of 2014, if you pay half your taxes in, you know, in the spring and the other half in the fall is when the payment starts. So it depends on if you have your taxes taken out monthly as to how you pay them or if you pay your taxes twice a year. Whether you escrow or not. You know, obviously, it's going to matter whether it's spread over 120 months versus if we were able to go to 15 years and it was 180 months. We also have the option of paying a, all of it right at 2014. We have the option of paying part of it and letting the rest go to taxes over the 10 or 15 years. And then, as Mr. Hill said, the option of a waiver depending on your age and your income. But the first payment doesn't start until 2014 when your first tax bill is due or how you escrow your taxes for that year.
Councilmember Swenson, could I just put a little clarification in there? Is that if you are paying 100% of it or a portion of it, you would actually have to pay that by November 30th of 2013. If you let it go to the Hennepin County tax bill to be payable with your taxes, then it would be the spring of 2014.
Amber Bennett.
One gentleman had a question about whether or not residents would be required to connect their sump pumps to a sump pump drain system.
The only time that we require it, that a homeowner connects to a sump pump drain system is if they're discharging onto a public right-of-way and meaning that it would go down, down the roadway itself. And that's per city code. So we, what we've done since, since we had the summer flooding in 1998, I think it was. I was shaking my guess then, is that we've required people to discharge their sump pumps to the outside and we've been basically looking the other way throughout the community where we haven't updated the roadway systems or added a drain tile, knowing that they have no place to discharge their lines other than in the street. So that's why we're coming through and putting in these sump drain tile systems so that they can discharge into the drain tile and not violate the city ordinance. And the reason why that city ordinance is, is if you continue to pump the sump pump throughout the season down, down the street, it becomes a health risk issue with algae and everything else that's growing in the gutter lines around the edge of the pavement.
There was another question asked about increasing the project area. And I have witnessed as a resident, been on both sides of a project, that got extended and resulted in a higher cost. So the, my answer would be you can't add more homes to an area that, to a project that's designed without redesigning the project. Am I right or am I wrong on that? Is there a way to, to do what the resident asks, which is to increase the number of homes that are within the assessment area?
If you, on a typical project and even on this one, as you're extending it out, those homes still have roadways and it's about the same monolineal foot per home as this neighborhood has. So economically, you're not going to be dropping down the assessments to, if you extend out the construction limits.
Related to that question, how did you determine this geographic area?
Like when Jack was going through how we prioritize neighborhoods, is that we pick neighborhoods that are very similar lot sizes and what can be handled in essentially one season if we do two to three phasing. So that's, that's how we determine the extent of this neighborhood.
As distinct from Country Club, walk me through the different assessable areas within that same geographic area. You know, we spread that, the assessment out into three areas within, two areas, I'm sorry, within the macro area. Why was that decision made and why doesn't that apply to this particular situation?
In that case, there were really distinct sized lots on the east side as the west side. So there was a nice dividing line to split up the assessment so that the lots on the west side that were larger weren't, or the lots on the east side weren't subsidized as in the lots on the west side. In this area, the average lots are basically the same throughout the neighborhood. So that's, that's why we chose not to split up the neighborhood. The one thing that we've got to keep in mind though is, is if you were a utility, let's say a sanitary sewer, water main and you're providing that, that function is that you don't know what's happening at the surface. So meaning that when we compare this neighborhood against Minnehaha Woods or the Country Club, we're not comparing it against the people that live in those places or the value of those properties at the surface. We're looking at just at the utilities itself and saying, these are old utilities that need replacing. And that's, and that's what we look at from, from the utility point of view.
Number Brendel.
Question brought up by Susan Aronson is, this project was on the calendar for 2017. How is it that we're looking at it now?
That's, that's the one thing that I say when we went through the prioritization presentation is that a lot of these will float around, meaning that the payments will deteriorate at different rates. And so a few years back, as it probably was out, out a few years, but as we're dialing in and we, and we keep on resur surveying the roadways every, every couple of years in the neighborhoods, then it, then it gives us more data or additional data and so that we were able to reprioritize what needs to be done at that particular time. So even, like I say, that's why when we're notifying people, right now, we're two years out. We'll look at going three years out, but those, but those three years are locked in then. And that we, we can't move those, that the third year, third year out. So it gives us less ability to move different projects around to accomplish what, what the 2020 vision comes down to.
Just one more. I think the overwhelming concern for the people in this room on both sides of this desk is the cost of this project. Where do, I don't understand engineering. I don't understand the costs related to asphalt, related to the infrastructure. And I don't, you know, other than receiving them on a piece of paper and saying, these are the costs for this project. But when it's broken down to this many homes and it is the assessment that it is, it is shocking. How do those numbers come about? I mean, is it strictly the square footage of by two minutes roadway? How do the numbers come about?
I think what I'm going to do is ask Paul or Toby to come up and talk a little bit about the cost estimating process.
Sure. Trying to think of how I could keep it brief. Essentially, what we do is we break the project into parts. So for a project this size, at a cost estimate of this level, we may have 75 individual pay items. Each pay item carries a unit, whether it's by the each, by the square foot, by the linear foot, the square yard, the ton. And we calculate then those amounts based on the plan in place. Then we step back and we take a look at what we call bid tabulations from previous projects. Maybe we'll look at them over the last three, four years, as Jack Sullivan indicated. We'll throw out highs and lows and we'll deal with the middle numbers for the prices per linear foot, per ton, per square yard. We apply those prices against those quantities and we total down to a bottom line. A contingency is put onto it and you arrive at your number. Those numbers are then divided into columns being, whether it's a city cost like curb and gutter or a cost borne by the property owner such as street reconstruction. And that arrives at those numbers in that table.
One of the, this won't be for you, but seeing you in front of me makes me think of a question that somebody raised and that was, might we have gotten a different outcome if we hadn't hired SEH to look at this project and we just had our own city staff look at it? So Wayne, I don't know, you might as well tackle that question.
Heaven sit down.
You can sit down. You don't have to answer that question.
We typically do about four or five projects a year. This year, we're doing four large projects. One of them is a combination as roads that you approved at the last council meeting. We have a staff of about seven to eight people in our engineering department that works on projects like this. And as you can imagine, each project requires a certain amount of time and an effort to put in to get a good quality project. So, so we, from an internal point of view, is that we can't handle that many projects so we outsource the other, the other projects so that we can continue on our reconstruction program. And SEH, this is kind of their specialty and they're a full-service firm, but, but we just hire them just to do this type of, type of work for us. And they've been doing this work since probably the wood, teal and cornelia dry projects, I believe it was. So they, so they basically react similar to, to our staff that we have that performs the other projects. So they're, you're not getting a better deal with them or a worse deal with them. They're basically the same that if we were to put our staff on it or another firm on it.
But the key to this is whether our staff is doing the project or whether SEH is doing the project, the cost of doing that project is part, is born into the project. So a project isn't more expensive because SEH is doing it and not our city engineers. So we charge, we charge for the service of doing a project, whether it's our city engineers that are doing it or SEH that is doing it. So there is not, you're not getting a higher-priced project because it's SEH.
That's right, yeah.
There were a lot of folks that came up to see us that talked about this as a hardship it is and we concur. But, you know, when you think about Susan Aronson and asking, what about 2017? And Susan, I don't know where you are, but you're the second family, I think, we've seen up here over the years where, I think we had one that moved from Country Club to the west part of Edina and got hit two years in a row. So one thing we've learned on these, on these matters is if you don't do it now and you wait, if we had done this in 2017, the cost would be greater. And this is borne out by an experience we had on Ridge Road, I think. They didn't want the project. We acquiesced and said we would wait. They came back, asked to get back on the schedule because the road turned into kind of a third road, road up there on the west side. And I think the cost went up appreciably because of that.
Yeah, it did. That was one out of the three that I'm aware of. The Country Club was another one that we delayed the project. And I forget the percentage that that went up.
20%.
12,000 to 16,000 on the east side, I believe it was.
It was significant. It was thousands of dollars.
The other one is just across the street here, Sunny Slope Neighborhood. That was prior to us paying for curb and gutters. But in 1996, it was around 3,000 and I believe in about five to eight years later, it went up to about 8,000 to 9,000 dollars, I believe, so.
Number Bennett.
Returning just briefly to the question about lighting. We know from survey and information that we've considered in the past that additional, a change to ornamental lighting does add to project cost. Is there a additional cost for Cobra intersection lighting? In some of the feasibility studies, lighting information is included. In this feasibility study, we have different staff members working on it and I don't find a plan, a survey of the lighting in the neighborhood as I did with the feasibility study before this. And we did see and hear in some comments about lighting. There was one, I think, resident who talked about children trying to return home from playing and really difficult to see. It's not a neighborhood that's asking for sidewalks or where sidewalks have been requested or in the comprehensive plan. But I am responding both to the question about the specifics of lighting and then also to the resident's request for value, you know, some value added to this. Is this something that can be looked at in the way of surveying the existing lighting, understanding what is and is not there and perhaps looking at additional Cobra head lighting, not decorative lighting?
To answer your question, Councilmember Bennett, on page 17 of 18 in the handouts that you have on your DSN, is 96 respondents do not favor upgrading the streetlights to the 19 that favor it. As far as the additional Cobra heads, we can look at the different intersections and see which ones aren't covered with the Cobra heads or even the two intersections that we're proposing to realign and make sure that the Cobra heads are realigned and are placed in those areas. We can also look at, a typical Cobra head would have a lot of kind of outlining or almost uplighting. We can look at potentially cutoff lights for the Cobra heads also. But there would still be Cobra heads on wood poles in the neighborhood. But, but we can look, look at those upgrades that would be no cost to the, to the residents.
Margie Dolan talked about the lack of necessity for a crosswalk. I think it was at Kent, Warwick crossing there. Do you want to comment on that, why you thought one might be necessary or whether you still believe that's, that's an issue?
I believe, Mayor and Council, I believe that was a recommendation or a discussion at the ETC. From our point of view, that would not meet our crosswalk warrants and that we wouldn't place one at that location. We are looking at the crosswalks or, I believe, along the Frontage Road as you're coming out to replace the stamped pavement crosswalks at those locations to improve those crosswalks on that, on that new trailer sidewalk.
Mayor, I have a couple of questions.
Yeah, go ahead.
Back to the Kent and Windsor, we're doing the narrowing of the intersections. Is this becoming standard practice within neighborhoods where we see these wider incongruous intersections to do narrowing automatically? Or is this being specifically recommended per project?
When we're looking at neighborhood reconstruction projects, we're, we're looking at narrowing the roadways. A lot of times, you'll have pavement that varies from 29 to 32 feet kind of without curb and gutter. And we're putting in a standard width of 27 feet face-to-face of curb and gutter. So we're narrowing, taking a little bit off on the each edge of the roadway. If we have big, wide, curvy curves or intersections, we're looking at narrowing those down also. It does a couple of things. One, that it helps control traffic, calms traffic. But it also, from an environmental point of view, is it reduces down our hard surface so that we don't have to treat all that water that's coming off of those, those intersections. And in the long run, I'm not sure what the price of oil is going to be and asphalt's a byproduct of oil. So if you're, if you're upgrading the roads in 20 to 30 years, to us, it makes sense to have a narrow road to begin with so that you're not spending that extra money into the future.
So cost is a driving factor as well as the stormwater management? And that, that ties back to the stormwater management plan and some of the strategies the city's trying to implementing on a citywide basis to implement that?
That's right, yeah.
Okay. And now I know. And, now, I know Melody Lake, or Lake Melody's on the, on the border of the neighborhood. It's, maybe it's on the project area, but when we did the Lake Harvey neighborhood, Gulf Terrace Heights, we had talked about catch basins and ways to improve the water quality. I don't know where the water, water quality stands, or if that's even a part of this evaluation, but can you just comment briefly on that?
One of the, I'll take that, because we're, we're, one of, one of the items is part of the storm sewer system, is that we'll be placing a grit chamber prior to going into Melody Lake. So, that's, that's going to help out the water quality of Melody Lake by catching the, the bigger pollutants and grit before it goes into Melody Lake itself. So, it'll be real close to the existing sanitary sewer lift station on the west side of Melody Lake.
And then, as far as the pay-as-you-go policy, Mayor, give me a history lesson here. Am I to understand, I mean, we, haven't we been paid as you go forever? It's not twenty years, it's forever.
Right.
And that's, that's part of the problem. Now, we're here when much of the city developed in the fifties and sixties, and now all these streets are coming due at the same time. It's, it's a very difficult situation. And to, to go out of the pay-as-you-go system would be, I, I think, cost prohibitive, but I think people have asked about it, and it's something I think should be financially modeled as we do our budget discussions. We've talked about this, this has kind of been an ongoing discussion. So, I think we should, we should visit this issue when we take up the budget. It's not going to help the current, this current round of street projects, but it's a concern to people. It was a concern on the road when I was campaigning, it's still there. And so, we have to look at it again. I think the last time we looked at this was, was 'oh five, is that correct?
Correct.
Two thousand four to five. So, it's worth another look to make sure we're, you know, using the best practice to make these projects cost-effective, to carry them out in a, in a organized fashion as well, and to keep up on our infrastructure, so.
Thank you. I think that was the, the point that Mr. Thompson raised, and I think, I think I saw him leave, but he was suggesting that we look at a modification of the funding approach, that, that there may be time to do that. I think, I think we probably will do that again. Here's one of the challenges, is, you know, when do you draw that bright line? So, so last year, your neighbors in a contiguous neighborhood paid a ten thousand dollar special assessment, and now this year, we draw a bright line, and now we say, oh, on a going-forward basis, everybody's going to pay part of their property tax, we're going to just do it a different way. And you've got a whole array of folks that, over the last ten years in particular, have, have endured these special assessments, and now the whole world changes. So, that's another component of it. But nonetheless, I think the, the point was well-taken, and Member Sprague raised it as well, that it, it would not hurt to look at whether or not a modification of the funding approach is in order. So, that's one thing we'll do. Couple of folks raised, including Mr. Straznick, the idea, if you, if you tear up Richmond Lane, now you're just wasting money on seven tenths of a mile. Oh, one, okay. All right, one block. So, what are your thoughts on that? I think it's been touched on before, but we should touch on it again, does it make sense to tear that up again?
It's not overlay, it's mill and overlay, so you are going down.
Well, any, any time that, that you have a portion, it, it doesn't make economical sense to, to leave a portion of a roadway in if it's good. If you look at the PCI ratings, they're, they vary all from block to block, essentially. So, do you, do you start piecemealing a project together? Economically, it doesn't make sense. From, from that point of view, is that they, they'll look at that area, and, and they might not take out the, the classified. They'll, they'll look at that area and see if, if the, if the classified was replaced because we couldn't bridge it, or whatever, with, with the asphalt, they might leave it in, but they might use it, or might even just roll it off to the side and use it, use it during the construction process. So, it's, it's not going to save money to leave that portion in, and it, it might save money to, to help utilize that material throughout the project, on other parts of the project.
The undercarriage may be reusable, the top's being recycled, and the curb and gutter, if there's no, if it's not structurally unsound, stays, as it does throughout the neighborhood. Any apron, any curb and gutter that's in decent condition would?
We, we, in this, in this situation, is what, what Paul and Toby have said, is that they've looked at the curb and gutter, and it doesn't meet the, the specifications, and they look at spalling, cracking, settlement, those types of items, is when we analyze the curb and gutter. And, and in this case, they're doing a wholesale change out of it. We would like to keep it in if, if we can, because it affects the storm sewer, you know, budget. So, so in some cases, projects, we've left full sections in, and only replace small sections that need replacement.
So, that's another unique circumstance that's making this project, even though that's not the assessable amount, that's still driving up the cost of the project, because most of the time, we, we can spec some of that curb and gutter to be reused, is my experience.
That's correct, yeah, that's right.
Laura Dirksen, I think I got her last name right over on Yvonne Terrace, said, or acquired as to whether we could do any value engineering. Can that be done? She referenced lighting, traffic calming, sump pump lines, things that people may want to comment on, or, or do something about. Would you comment on that, please?
As far as the, the, the lighting, the sump pump, lighting would be an extra cost, so that wouldn't be a value engineering. I think we've spoken about that. The sump pump costs, that, getting to the stubs to the properties, that comes out of our stormwater cost, so that's not a, a, a cost to value engineer. As far as the, the special assessment costs, is, is like, like Paul and Toby have said, is that, is that they've engineered it, not over-engineered it, but engineered it to, to meet, meet our specifications. And I think what, what we'll see is, is a competitive cost savings when this goes out to bid, is, is what we're hoping for. So, you know, to reduce down cross-sections or anything like that, in the long run, you're going to be paying more money. It's, it's just proven. So, I, I don't believe that, to, that, that, you know, we'll, we'll look at and be, be as stringent as possible as, as far as the design goes, but to cut corners on the design, I wouldn't recommend that.
So, I take it, as you told the resident from Viking Hills, we're going to do everything we can to bring this cost, this project in, if we approve it, on the lowest cost possible. But by still, but still accomplishing the things we need to accomplish from an infrastructure standpoint.
That's, that's our goal on every project, yeah, absolutely.
Mr. Heffernan raised the issue of how were the streets checked? I think he, you know, was referring to the pavement condition index. You know, why, how do, how do, how do we determine these streets need to be redone? I mean, you just talked about an average, I think of around twelve on the PCI. What was the frequency that you checked the various streets involved in the proposed project area?
Yeah, actually, what we do is, we, we hire an engineering, engineering firm called Good Point. And they, what they do is, they're based out of St. Paul, they work all over the world on pavements. And they, they go through the city, and they take about a third of the city a year, and they, they reevaluate the pavements. And they, they, they go through and, and evaluate it for the, the cracking, the stress, inundation, settlement, those, those types of items. Puts it in a computer program, and then it basically gives the, what they, the PCI rating. And then, part of that computer program, for those streets that haven't been checked for that year, they have a deterioration curve that's applied to those streets also, so that they all come out basically rated all the same for that particular year. I think one of the other items that he talked about was on the sewers, on the sewer mains and such. And what we do is, we, we videotape all the sewer mains, and we analyze to make sure, to look at the root intrusion. They look at the cracking, settlement, those types of items on all, on all the lines. And a lot of times, when they're going through the, the system, they'll also, the camera can rotate and pivot and things, and, and they'll look up into the, the sewer service to see if, what they can see from, from the main line. If we see a lot of root intrusion in the sewer service, we'll send out a letter to the homeowner right away, telling them that they have seventy or eighty percent root intrusion in their service, and that is something that they might want to have cleaned out. Otherwise, on, on, on opportune time, you'll have a backup. And so, we're trying to help out the residents, looking at from, from where we can see their sewer service.
Thank you. Member Sprague?
I, I just want to talk a bit about the communication that went on here, because I, the, the feelings of the residents I can resonate with in terms of getting, you know, it said eight to twelve, and then six to, well, eight to twelve was a year before, and then it said six to nine, and then we went back, back up. If it had been eight to twelve, eight to twelve, and then where it is now, it would have been less of a surprise. And where did we make a mistake, and how are we going to correct that for the future? Because, to me, the important part of this whole process, interfacing with the residents and exchanging, is to set a realistic expectation.
And that's, and that's, that's what we, we were trying to do, is, is to let people know when we have the open house, is that there is a special assessment that's involved with the project. It was our mistake to, to actually put a range, range on those. And like I say, in, in the, going forward in the future, is that we won't put that number on the letter, but we'll have it on the backside of the letter with a spreadsheet that would have all the, the most recent projects. So, they can see a range of, of numbers, and more actual numbers of what was, was a pending assessment, and what comes out as a final assessment, and, and what, what has been done on, on the project. Similar to, in the, in the very back of the, the handout today, we had a, a spreadsheet that, that covers different, basically, different, yep, that, there you go, that has different projects, on what was done in those projects, and what the pending assessment was for, for those particular projects.
I would, I would make sure that includes as, as much broad information as possible, because again, we're trying to set a realistic expectation, and to me, a proper communication shows a, it is a broad range. It really, it really is project-specific, and the, as we see in this neighborhood, even something like the soils can greatly affect the outcome of price.
The one item, too, is I think with our new website, that'll be coming online shortly, is that's going to really help us out also, getting more information out, and keeping some information that, that on past projects also.
And then, for, for future projects, again, this doesn't help our, the people standing before us, but do we, we have this CIP. In Minneapolis, if you bought a house in Minneapolis, they'll show you a five-year CIP. We have twenty-eleven through twenty-nineteen, so it's a ten-year CIP of local street projects on the website. We give a two-year notice, I think Minneapolis gives one year for an upcoming street project. And rightly, we should, because our residents are paying a hundred percent. But, the, the CIP map is, will that be available on the new site as well?
Yes, so that's actually available right now on our site, and it'll continue to be available on our, on our new site. We also have on our, our whole process, so we have a video on roadway reconstruction, and what to expect during, during the whole, the special assessment process, and the reconstruction process. And we have past, or projects that are ongoing, so that people can get a flavor of what, what kind of communication's being done. Because weekly, we send out city extras on projects, and about once a month or so, we send out a hard, hard mail copy to, to folks. People that don't have email access is that we ask them to let us know, and then we'll take that city extra, and we'll actually mail it out to those residents also. So, we, we really, during the process, we really pride ourselves to make sure that everybody's communicated with on what's going on, and, and what's going to happen next on, on the project.
Ember Bindel?
Excuse me. You brought up what I was going to bring up. I spent some time with Manager Neil last Friday, and went through one of the projects that we worked on last time, and really, just page by page, went through that project, and identified some inconsistencies, and just some lack of detail, lack of, like, just sloppy work, if you will. And, and so, it, every project gets the same estimate, six to nine, eight to twelve, six to nine, eight to twelve. And every resident looks at it and says, this is my project. But it isn't, at that point, it's just boilerplate, and they don't know that. And we've now looked at enough projects that we know that. But I think that's where we need to, we, we need to clean it up and be, be forthright. And if the plan works, that the schedule of the past projects, and the pending, at the preliminary estimate, and the realistic assessment is, if that's meaningful information, if that answers the question, and that clears up some of the misunderstanding and communication, that's great. But I think we owe a really debt, we have, we have an apology to give to, to neighbors who, I mean, they're looking at this, and they think these are their numbers that they're seeing, but they aren't. And it's not until their number comes on the inside, and in this case, is not even in the ballpark of the pen, of the possible estimates. So, I don't need a response, I just need to know that this, this is going to get cleaned up. Are there more projects that we're, we're going to look at this year, or so far, we've looked at four? Is that it for this year?
We have on the twenty-first of February, the Tracy Avenue project, which is a state aid route.
All right. One last comment, and we had two residents talk about newly purchased homes, that they were unaware that these meetings had begun prior to their closing on their home. When an assessment, when, when a home has an assessment, that goes on the record of that home. So that, as a Realtor, you look at that home, how is the, how is it identified that there's an assessment on that property?
I can tell you, if it's not pending, it's not, a title will not find the pending assessment. It's, the notice is sent to the homeowner before it's a pending assessment. It'll be pending after, if we approve this tonight, it would be a pending assessment after the hearing. But before the hearing, it's simply a notice that goes to the residents. In Edina, we send out the notice two years in advance. So, if you're buying from a homeowner, on, on the purchase agreement, it says seller has or has not received notice of an upcoming improvement. If they misrepresent that, that's a breach of contract. We also have the twen, the CIP, ten-year CIP map. The real estate professional has to know enough, working in the Edina market, to guide their client to that information.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else have questions? I think we've covered quite a few of them.
You know, I think, you know, should this pass? The main question we have, I think, is to, how, how can we buffer the assessment? Manager Neil, is that something, if we were to put it in a motion, that you would want us to delineate out, looking at a fifteen-year? How do you, how, if I were to put it in a motion, how would you want me to state that?
I think I would want you to state it as a direction for staff to investigate that as a possibility, and to report the results of that investigation back to you at our earliest convenience.
Okay, and the possibility is that, you know, we know the bond companies would prefer ten years over fifteen. Is there any other limitation? We don't, there isn't any other state limitation?
I just conferred with the city attorney, and there, there is now.
Yeah, I mean, there is a limitation, but it's way out there, it's thirty years.
Okay.
And those uplines aren't sold.
But we have to establish a criteria for granting the hardship at some point, because I think it's, you know, anybody going through this process, no matter what the amount is, it's, it's a hardship in real economic, you know, in real dollars. So, where are we going to draw the line? Because the next group that comes up will, will want to take advantage of, could possibly want to take advantage of, of the longer amortization. So, I just think, when we have the discussion, we need to talk about that.
Okay.
And I'm, I'm not so sure, in terms of, I, I think I would, I would pick different words, choose different words than you've used. We have actually looked at this issue once before. I think it was in conjunction with reconstruction in the Highlands neighborhood.
Yep.
And when information was available to, to the council, staff, and residents, it was decided that the shorter payment period actually was preferred, given what interest rates were doing at the time, given what that longer payment period would do. So, I think that kind of information, bringing that information forward, will be valuable, just as bringing information forward on policy, how we pay for, for road reconstruction as a a community. I think I would, I have also requested that we have a Citizens League type of process this year on that issue. It's, it's time. And I think the information will be helpful. If it isn't paid for this way, how is it paid for? If it isn't paid for over 10 years, what does it look like paid for over 15 years? To me, it's not so, I understanding that bond raiders don't like it. If it's, depending on what the results of the other conversation are, it may be something that's looked at, not just in a hardship context, but something that makes the infrastructure improvement that's so necessary more affordable to people who are paying for it. So again, I would just, I, I favor looking at it, just choosing different words.
One of the things that may assist us in that endeavor is all of the census data. Because I know, in a, in a sort of raw form, we know now what some of the income levels are in different quadrants, and, and that may help guide us to establish some standards that we could use on a going-forward basis. Or we, we may eventually decide that we need to stick with the 10-year assessment rate on balance. But I think it's, it's well worth looking at.
It's a community conversation.
So, all right. Did that help you with respect to making a motion? Do you want to move the resolution?
I will move Resolution 2012-19.
And request that the, we, the staff investigate the possibility of whether a 15-year assessment rate is appropriate?
Correct.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Member Sprague?
Aye.
Member Swenson?
Aye.
Member Bennett?
Aye.
Member Brindle?
Aye.
Mayor Hovland?
Aye. Thank you. Thank you.
Oh, Mr. Mayor? Hold on.
Ma'am, maybe I didn't understand. You, you gave staff direction to come back you with 10 versus 15 years. But, but did you also order, have a motion adopting Resolution 2012-19?
We did.
Okay.
That was the main part of our motion. We'll let the, our neighbors clear here before we continue on. All right, the next portion of the agenda is community comment. If there's anyone in the audience that wishes to come forward and share a new issue or concern, that hasn't, concern that hasn't been on the agenda in the past 30 days, wasn't on the agenda tonight, and is not slated for a future agenda consideration, you're sure welcome to come forward. You'll have three minutes to express your concern. Please give us your name and address. And I think you were here long enough to know that the 30, the yellow light is the 32nd warning light.
Jackie Whitbeck, 6128 Brookview Avenue. And I sure hope I meet the criteria for speaking tonight. I don't know all of the agendas. And I hope you're not too worn out, because this is something I feel very, very passionate about. I would like to propose that a moratorium be placed on building on 50-foot lots, and also moratorium be placed on subdividing properties into 50-foot lots. The continuity and aesthetic value of our neighborhoods are being eroded by oversized buildings on these 50-foot lots. And the consequences of this type of building are devastating, not only to the environment and the enjoyment of one's home, but the depreciation of the monetary value of one's home also. The city's codes for building are based on 75-foot lot widths. And to expect a one-size-fits-all guideline is not only unrealistic, it's harmful. Continuity of our neighborhoods is a result of uniform lot size, not the size of the buildings on the lots. At least three, at least three and a half years ago, I asked Planning Commissioner Lonsbury that restrictions be revised for these 50-foot lots. Everyone agreed that they were needed, but nothing has happened since then. At the last Planning Commission meeting that I attended, the commissioners all seemed to agree that their decisions were more of a pick-your-poison type of decision. They agreed that changes needed to be made. The Planning Commission discussions also involved applying special conditions to proposed subdivision. They decided not to provide any conditions, because then they thought it was unfair to the other people, or people who already owned 50-foot-sized lots. So they didn't want to. And that is per Minnesota statute, that they are allowed to apply these conditions. In another meeting of the Planning Commission, it's not one I attended, but I read the minutes too, Commissioner Fisher stated that a majority of zoning ordinance requirements were established in at least the 1970s or earlier, and I believe quite a bit earlier. And since that time, no one has taken the time to adjust the language. He went on to say that, in his opinion, from a practical perspective, the unique circumstance was created by the city when amended its ordinance requiring all lots to be 75 feet in width, which I think actually goes back to the 1950s. One need only drive down 59th and Fairfax to see an example of what's going on with the subdivisions on, or building on 50-foot lots. And according to OSHA requirements, when you're excavating a foundation, a builder must dig five feet outside of the foundation wall.
Ms. Whitbeck, I, sorry, your time is up. Your time is up. If you want to submit your written material, please do so.
Yes, I, I will. Because I could just close by saying, unless you've experienced a subdivision, or live next to one, you have no idea the harm it causes.
Thank you, Ms. Whitbeck. And if you want to submit your written materials to the clerk, either this evening, or, or subsequent to the, to the matter tonight, to our meeting, you can sure do that. All right, thank you. Anyone else? All right. We'll move on to the reports and recommendations portion of the agenda. First matter is 2012-17, Resolution Accepting Various Donations. Is there a motion?
Second.
We got a motion, a second, to accept various donations. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose say nay. Carry. I found it. Thank you. All right. Donations, this reporting period, are to the Braemar Golf Course Memorial Fund for future golf course equipment purchases. A variety of donors there. Donation to the Adana Fire Department, and also to the Adana Park Department. A nice donation from the Community Foundation for Browndale Park improvements, almost $1,000 there. All of the donors' names will be on the website over the next few days.
I have a quick comment.
Yes, thank you. Go ahead.
About the donation from the Adana Community Foundation, made on behalf of a designated fund, that the foundation holds for the Browndale Park Neighborhood Association. So it, it was a grant from that designated fund, then that paid for the work at the park. And the work was paid partially by the city and partially by the fund.
Thank you. All right. Next matter on the agenda this evening is 8B. It's the potential award of a contract regarding the water meter replacement project, contract number PW12-1.
Mr. Mayor, I'll, I'll take this one. Public Works is requesting to replace our over 14,000 water meters within the city. Our current system was installed in the mid-1990s. At that time, the city upgraded the manual read system to a drive-by system. Staff started to see the batteries failing within the past two years, and put a placeholder within the capital improvement plan to replace these batteries. This falls, when staff initiated the bidding process, we discovered many issues with our current system. One, the first issue is that the current meter reading system is no longer being supported by the vendor. So any, any breakdowns that we have on the meter reading equipment, or anything else, is that we basically have to go almost to eBay to, to find that equipment to, so we can read our system. The second issue is that the bandwidth license that the FCC has appropriated to us, or to this meter reading system, is expiring next January. So January of 2013 is, is expiring. We've actually have sent a, a request to the FCC extending that license, given on our plan for, for replacement of these meters. We, we, that we, we found out last September, as far as the bandwidth expiring. The third issue is, is that starting in 2014, any modification to the, to a meter needs to meet the Safe Water, Safe Drinking Water Act lead-free requirements. A typical meter, or some meters, actually, within the, the body of the meter has, has, does, does have some lead in it. So anything that we touch after 2014, we have to make sure is lead-free. So, given those three issues, staff bid out the project as a total meter replacement to have completed by the, by June of 2013. The capital improvement plan program has appropriated $1.2 million for this project. Staff did receive two bids. Our city attorney has confirmed that the apparent low bid did not meet our specifications for the project, is recommending to reject that bid. The remaining bid for this project is $3.6 million. Staff does believe that this bid is a good bid. Due to, due to the project being over budget as compared to the capital improvement program, staff is recommending that treatment plant number five be delayed until the years of 2014 to 2015. In our capital improvement plan, starting in 2013, we are anticipating spending $1.6 million. In 2014, $2.5 million, and 2015, $3.5 million. But we're, what we're requesting is that those items get pushed out. And if you recall, when treatment plant was put in the CIP plan, it was basically before the crash, and we were anticipating a lot more redevelopment in the greater Southdale area. So, so I, I believe that that, that would, would, would fit together. And what I would recommend is that we do more additional studies on that water treatment plant, and, and the, you know, the, the future need of what year do we need to have that online for that area. We really need to, I really need to stress tonight, the pressing need to start the meter installation process as quickly as possible. We're having, we're in the different, four different cycles in the city of reading, and we have large areas that we have battery failures. So we're spending an enormous amount of staff time going in and changing out the batteries, and doing hand readings of these meters. So, like I say, we really need to stress that, to change out of this, of the meters. Tonight I have with is Jesse Struve and, and Dave Gorgon to answer any technical questions you might have regarding this issue. But I'll take any questions you have.
I do have some questions. Member Bennett? Thank you, thank you. Why, why are some of these conditions occurring? For instance, a water meter would seem to be something relatively stable. Is it, why are they not supported by a vendor within what seems to be less than a 20-year period? And if so, or what factors went into that, and how do we avoid encountering those factors going forward? Also, the, the batteries failing, and I understand that staff time putting in the maintenance is not staff time spent on other things, but what was the expected life of the batteries? So why are we having the issues that we're having within the timeframe that we're experiencing?
Yeah, I guess maybe Dave or Jesse could probably answer those.
Oh, Member Bennett, thank you. The original system was originally installed in the mid-1990s, maybe right around 1996 to 1999, somewhere in that range. It was a trace system, which was a third-party vendor, that we're partnered with Badger Meters. There was an issue between that trace and the Badger Meters, where they kind of dissolved their partnership, and trace no longer supports that meter reading equipment. We have taken steps to put some redundancy in our system, to find another meter reading system from a, a community nearby that phased out trace. So we do have some backups, but it, it is just that, a, a backup that is no longer supported by the parent company.
What is the usual anticipated life of a water meter?
Maybe what, as you're coming up here, is, is, the one thing that we probably should explain is that how the system is set up. And, and I wish I'd have some, some diagrams of, of the water meter, the ra, the radio read, and then the battery system. And maybe we can explain what's, what's a makeup of a water, water system.
There's, there's two issues. There's the water meter itself, and then there's the reading system. What we're talking about here is the reading system. It had a 10-year battery life. As Jesse spoke, it was originally installed about 96, 97. So you do the math, we're kind of living on borrowed time as far as that battery life goes, and then the unsupportedness of kind of the third-party vendor to the original distributor, how that relationship fractured. It was not distributor fault. It wasn't this or that. It's just, the system itself was, was no longer viable or supported, the battery life. We're, again, living on kind of borrowed time. Their actual reading equipment is no longer warranted. As, as Wayne said, it's kind of going out on eBay, going out looking for companies that are able to service this. And we have, you know, purchased other reading equipment to try to, you know, give ourselves a safety net. But again, it's starting to fail at, at near catastrophic rates now with both battery failure and the reading equipment itself.
How old, how old is the technology? Understanding that these were installed in the mid-'90s, was this a second round of installations? When did we begin remote reading?
The drive-by kind of radio reading, I believe, kind of started early '90s. At the time that we purchased the trace system, it, it was a forefront. It was a kind of top-of-the-line system. And it actually did perform as it was expected to. As time has gone on, again, with this, with the circumstances, with, with the companies kind of abandoning it, basically, everybody was kind of left holding a bag there. It was a good system. It has outlived its usefulness. And again, it's, it's begun to fail, not at a manageable rate, but at a rate that is, we're not able to collect our reads in any sort of acceptable timeframe. We're spending a lot of man-hours trying to get our, our utility bills out.
So whatever the reasons, the necessity exists, and I guess part of, part of why I'm asking the questions that I'm asking is, if we're facing the kind of expenditure that we're facing, and the unexpected magnitude of it, how do we avoid being in this situation in 10 or 15 more years? I mean, whatever we, the choice, we want to make sure that we're not putting this problem on budget, budget makers and decision-makers in, in what seems to be a relatively short amount of time for what seems to be fairly stable technology.
Yep. I believe we're looking at a 20-year system. That's, that's actually migratable to even, to a better system within those 20 years. So that's, that's what I believe is what, what we spect out on this system.
Correct. The batteries, from the bids that we got, have a 20-year warranty. It's 10 years that is fully covered, and then it's prorated at about a 10% decrease per year thereafter. So the batteries themselves, through the studies, do, and better technology, the lithium ions, are lasting much, much longer.
I think it's important to remember
I think it's important to remember, though, consider these remote battery-operated computers that we use. What can you imagine? Lasts for fifteen, sixteen years. And so, I think they have done more than they were called upon to do, and a battery hates cold weather. It really doesn't like cold weather. So the fact that we've gotten ten years plus out of a system that, I think we've eked everything we could out of that system. I mean, it's a little bit of sticker shock, so I'm glad there's a contingency on how we're going to be able to pay for it. But is it important? Absolutely. It's the only way we know what to bill for our water. So, it absolutely is. But I don't think there's any question of whether we got value for what we had. I think we did, and now it's time to do it again, so.
Member Sprague.
Thanks, Member Bennett. So, the original battery warranty was twenty years, and because of the...
Ten, I'm sorry.
Was ten.
Ten.
Oh, so we did meet the warranty.
Correct.
So what were we pursuing this failed company for, then? What would we, just for the replacements?
Well, actually, since that's a system that we're operating right now, and that's why we're pursuing backup, you know, handheld readers, or readers that we have in our vans, just so that we can keep reading the system until we replace the radio reads or migrate to this new system.
And if I understand you correctly, the new batteries are going to be warranted for the twenty years, and there's going to be the ability to replace them and not necessarily have to replace the whole meter, or not?
Correct. In our specifications that we spelled out, we did call for field-replaceable batteries. There are systems out there that allow you to replace just the battery themselves, and then there are systems out there that require you to replace the entire radio, which is more expensive. So in our specifications, we did write in that the battery should be field-replaceable.
How are you notified when batteries are failing? Is it like a GPS-type system, or is it smart metering?
Currently, you just simply don't get the read in.
Okay.
It's based on a distance. You should be able to drive by, pick that read up as you go by the home or the commercial building. As the battery starts to weaken, that distance that it can transmit out gets shorter and shorter and shorter. You end up pulling in driveways, you end up walking in, physically getting right next to the meter, you know the battery's dying. The new systems have much longer distance that they can transmit to, based on the radio frequency that they're using and the improvements on the batteries.
Okay.
Other questions?
I will move the issue.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded that we award the bid on contract number PW twelve dash one, the water meter replacement, as recommended by staff to Ferguson Waterworks. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Carry it. Next, correspondence and petitions. Anything further other than what we had in the dais this evening?
No, Your Honor, there is none.
Okay. I'm going to hold off on council and mayor comments until we go through the HRA work.
Okay. Questions on a couple of pieces of correspondence. We had a letter resent by a resident who's concerned about the six-hour parking limit on her block, and has some questions about enforcement, what it takes to actually move a vehicle. Has she received a response? And then also, we received correspondence on the Valley View Road and Sally Lane issue also.
I do not know the, I don't know the answer to the first question, but I can check on that for you.
The address appears to be West Fifty-Sixth Street, and I can, it's an issue that arose in June, and one of the residents, part of her concerns were that citations were issued without residents being warned according to the content of the letter. So possibly we could take a look at it and get back to it within the next couple of weeks. That would be great.
Thank you.
And then, what is the status of Bennet at this time, or the Valley View Road and Sally? Do we have...
Well, I believe that...
Yeah, well, we're going to ask Roger about that.
This is correspondence.
If you can hold that up, Member Bennett. Hold that address side after HRA.
All right, let's, let's...
No. Didn't come in special.
Well, actually, we shouldn't maybe be finishing the council meeting, I think. Yeah, it'd be the cleanest way to do it. So, Member Bennett's raised an issue that has been lingering with us for several months, and based on some correspondence we received Monday morning, I had a conversation with our city attorney, and he has a recommendation for us at this point in time as to what to do in terms of next steps relative to this matter. Roger, would you comment, please?
Yes, Mayor. It's always, obviously, it's obviously always difficult when a resident in the council or the city don't see things the same way in or out. We've had engineers look at this, and they've had differences of opinion. And we think, rather than just proceeding and then maybe ending up in litigation at some point if people don't like what's happened, that we suggest we go to mediation, like we do with a lot of other people. That we get a mediator involved and talk to that mediator, and they can say what they have to say, and we can say what we have to say. I think that'd be a good step to try to resolve this in a manner that's satisfactory to everyone. That, of course, is your decision.
All right. And beyond, what else you and I talked about was non-binding mediation first. If the Bennetts would agree, we would then, and we couldn't resolve it in non-binding mediation, we would go to, suggested going to binding arbitration.
We certainly could do that as well.
And if that is rejected as a concept, I think that, as you and I talked about it, it seemed that the safer route to go if we have to engage in litigation would be to do a declaratory judgment action, so that we're working on this matter from the standpoint of getting a judge to make a decision as to whether or not we can actually delim these trees.
Yes, and obviously, we think we're right. They think they're right.
They think they're right.
And I'm absolutely convinced we're right, but they aren't. And so that would be a way of resolving it.
Right. As opposed to the risk involved of us deliming the trees and then having a lawsuit and not having a judge agree with our position and maybe ending up writing a big check.
I don't think that would happen, but it's certainly possible.
You never know. I mean, anything can happen.
Anything can happen.
We've experienced it here. So I think, I like that notion of proposing first that we go to non-binding mediation, and proposing that we go to binding arbitration. If that doesn't work, we go to declaratory judgment rather.
So moved.
Member Spencer.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Carry it. All right. Let's see. I think, is it Member Brindle? Want to start out the council comments, please?
I have thought of three. A question is the sump pump drain issue. Does that apply to pools? We've got a couple of pools in our neighborhood, and we've got these blue hoses that come out into the street and go down into the storm sewer. So does, since we don't want sump pumps to do that, do we want pools to not do that? So that's a question. And then, number two, these assessment hearings we've been having, they have me wondering. When I look at the map, the lots are, particularly in this Richmond Hills neighborhood, the lots are virtually the same width. But where I am in the Indian Hills area, we've got a lot of different lot widths. So I'm wondering how assessments are going to be calculated when you've got lot widths that are hundreds of feet versus lot widths that are as small as a hundred feet. So, it just seems to me that they would have to be different, but I will throw that out there because I'm just curious about how that calculation would work. And my third is a question that we talked a little bit about upstairs, and that is year-end real estate statistics as far as where are we and what are we doing for foreclosures, et cetera.
Member Brindle in council, let me take that last one, because I got the 2011 annual report on the Twin Cities housing market from Minneapolis Area Association of Realtors. And Edina for 2011, average days on market, one hundred and forty-seven days. Total closed sales, six hundred and ninety-five, which is up five percent from 2010. And then, percentage of the inventory that was distressed, meaning short sale or foreclosure, seventeen percent. And something we talked about recently, but we are in the ninety-fifth percentile with that number. We have very, very few lender-mediated sales happening, and that's part of the reason why this year, median price was up point one or point two percent over 2010. Average price up about two percent for that very reason. The rest of Twin Cities is still down ten percent. Much more foreclosure activity, and that's dragging down the traditional home seller as well, and we're just not having that problem here in Edina.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Member Bennett.
Thank you. Well, just to reemphasize, I think we identified some things during discussion tonight that really are quite important to move forward on, and one of them is the sidewalk issue, policy, funding, prioritization. I think we have a lot of people willing to work on it as volunteers, but I think however we're able to put City Hall resources into that, I think it's really critical that we do that. I think it's going to both be a good in terms of city infrastructure and also a good in terms of process, and being able to focus on issues rather than refocusing on an area where we have indicated in the past a desire, a plan to move forward, and yet we keep coming back without a plan. So that is one comment. And then in terms of the special assessments, I think there's, it sounds like there's consensus in looking at that. I don't know if it's appropriate for a Citizens League budget analysis, but I think to have, to look at what the options are, what, how they would be funded, and what that would mean for residents, how much they would cost and how they would be paid for, I think it would be very, very helpful to have, for people to have that information, whether or not it results in a change of policy, but just to even have a deeper understanding of what, how this policy came to be and why it continues to be in effect, if it continues to be in effect. But again, what are the options and what would they cost?
Thank you.
Yeah, I asked Manager Neil just to do a quick calculation about a week ago, you know, what would happen to a house if we tried to pay for street reconstruction similar to what we'd funded for the last four years? And for instance, on my house, I would be paying a hundred and fifty to two hundred dollars more a year in taxes. So when you hear that neighborhood, you know, thinking about a hundred and forty years, there's a limit to how long that goes for what they have to pay. If we start having to pay as a community, that limit for them would continue on forever, just trying to fund the four projects, five projects we do every year for the last four years. So, it will be interesting as we go to look at it, but I don't, you know, it'll be interesting what we come up with as a solution, but I can see, listening to them, what that a hundred and forty dollars more a year does a month to them, what it would do a year over, forever. It's a little... I have nothing, other than that little spout. It's a minor spout. Hmm? Oh, Xerxes, yeah. Oh, when is the Xerxes sidewalk project coming? Because we're starting to get letters on it, so, as if we know what the plan is and what it's going to look like, and so...
Yep. Now, Member...
Sometimes I think residents who hear about this think that I, that we know ahead of time what everything is, and they actually are in the know way before we are.
Yep. Now that we have these projects out, done with, our next step is to start on the sidewalk feasibility. So, that's probably be the spring sometime is that we'd be looking at those projects.
Oh, and I didn't get a chance to call you because it was the weekend, but when I was driving down France about two weeks ago, the new section of sidewalk that you did between Forty-Fourth and Forty-Ninth and a half, there were three different people within one block, not walking together, but differently, walking on the new sidewalk, and I just wanted to tell you that. Looks great.
Thank you. Member Sprague.
Thank you, Mayor. Met with Sarah Zorn from the Energy and Environment Commission, Mary Werbalowski from Edina Gold Green, and we had some good conversations on environmental issues. And one of the things that popped in my mind after the meeting was maybe the EEC might want to have some type of educational forum, either yearly or bi-annually, whatever, that has community conversations about some of these upcoming issues, just to see where the residents stand and any additional input they might have and ideas. And, you know, you think about, some communities are reducing plastic bag usage at retail operations. They're doing more in the areas of commercial recycling. We talked about the organized hauling or the zone hauling issue. We've talked about wood burning. We've talked about a lot of interesting issues, and I think if they could have a forum where people can learn about these issues and then give some feedback and some insight, that would be a valuable asset for us to pursue. So, I'm bringing that up, so that the, and if the council has any other comments on that as well, I'm just bringing that up to get some ideas percolating through. I saw that Governor Dayton is putting together this transportation financing advisory group to develop more cohesive funding system for our transportation needs, and I hope, Mayor, that you might talk about that tonight. Do you know something about what's going on with that?
Just what I've read, and I've had some conversations with MINDOT, and I think MINDOT's been asked to gather up the group within certain categories, and they've specified who they want from a legislative standpoint. I think they want one from the majority party, one from the minority party. And then they have different groups of interested entities that they would like to see served. But beyond that, I haven't heard anything from MINDOT about how they're going to populate that study group, that finance study group.
Which brings me to my next point.
Which I did, which I did suggest, I wouldn't mind being on it.
We'd love to have you on that. Which brings me to my next point, talking about the Greater Southdale, kind of the transportation advisory group, this broad coalition of business owners and multiple jurisdictions and residents and so on. Do we have a timeline on starting to think about, starting to discuss the composition of this group and how to pull this together, Manager Neil?
Do we have a timeline? I don't have a timeline, actually, in mind right now, other than to begin talking about that with staff during the first quarter, but I don't have a timeline on when we start soliciting and appointing and developing scope, and we just, we haven't got to it yet.
Well, first quarter's broad timeline. It's in the works. That's all.
It's in the works, that's all I wanted to, to make sure of. The, the issues of communication that came up tonight in, in this process, I think we're always trying to continually refine the message that gets to the homeowner about the assessment process, and I'm hoping that the communication department will go back and revisit this again, as you probably do year to year, and look at the, the letters that are going out in that two-year communication cycle preceding the hearing, as well as the, the exit survey. And I, I want to applaud you for using that. I think we should use the exit survey in a lot of different areas in, in city government to, to make sure we're giving this great customer service and to discover anything that could be improved in the process. And then also, I think a lot of thought needs to be given to the content on the new website page for these local street reconstruction projects. Finally, after a heavy meeting like tonight, I think it's time for a little levity, and so we're all going to play, am I, okay, I consent. We're all going to play a round of Name That Council Member. So I was at the YMCA board meeting this morning, and we were looking at some old boards from the 90s of various fundraising activities going on, and what do I come across? Number 51...
I don't know him.
Yeah, who's that guy?
Who's 5153?
Number 5149 is the participant, and underneath, it's, it's on this picture, it says, "Do you remember the Lots of Laps Run that was held in the fitness center in 1993? How many times around the indoor running track equated one mile? Do you remember?" 28. Anyhow, look at this, look at this.
Picture of athletic health.
So, anyone want to take a guess?
Well, that would be Mrs. Bennett.
Mrs. Bennett, wow. I mean, look at those arms, man. Those thighs are incredible. Buffed. Anyhow, I will, I'll be doing more archival work, trying to find photos of other council members.
I am so nervous.
I'll be talking to your...
That inline skate race I did years ago is not going to be pretty.
I'll be talking to your sons and daughters and cousins and everything else, and of course, feel free to talk to my wife, she'll get you some embarrassing photos of me. Anyhow, thank you, Member Bennett, for being a good sport, and that's all I got for tonight.
Oh, would you report on the Y? Status on the new Y opening?
The YMCA, okay, the YMCA is slated to open the grand openings in March. The first floor fitness facility is already done. If you haven't seen it, it is simply amazing. It's an amazing facility. There's great...
The rotary room is done, pretty much done.
Rotary room's done. We have to get the, the marquee on the front of the door, and, and there's, they're working on community rooms downstairs. And one thing I was talking about this morning at the board meeting with Greg Hanks, Executive Director, was to find out if there will be additional community space available to City of Edina groups, so that if we are out of capacity within our own network, we might recommend that as a place. And I haven't got a definitive answer, but as that calendar's pulled together with programming in those rooms, and they're quite large rooms, I will get back to city staff and let, let you know if that will be a shared resource. I'm keeping my fingers crossed because it's a, it's a very, very nice new facility.
Well, let's see, these, these street reconstruction hearings are really rugged. I mean, we do some difficult public policy work here, but this is some of our difficult work that we do, I think. It's, it's time to look at some of these issues, as Member Bennett mentioned earlier, that are germane to our neighbors and friends in our town. From a calendaring standpoint, on the ninth, on the 9th, January 9th, morning of the 9th, Monday, I think it was, Manager Neil and I met with Representative of ESGR with some of our police officials. We are going to be nominated. That is an organization, as you may recall, that works with employers of garden reservists to make sure that federal law is complied with in terms of their job status if they get called up for military service. There are different categories of awards, some of which the City of Edina has, has won in the past on a local basis from them as being an employer of folks in the garden reserve. And now they have told us that they want to nominate us for a national award called the Patriot Award. And, and Kevin Raffedal and the chief and some other folks from the PD are working on that presentation. I think it's already been submitted, if I remember correctly from a timing standpoint. Jennifer helped, Jennifer helped craft it, so be interesting to see what happens. I don't remember the timing of it. Jennifer, do you remember when it might be announced?
It's somewhere months before it would be announced, but we'll know if it's made first, I think, the first quarter.
Good. And that, that wasn't our notion, that's the ESGR nominating us for this national award. So that's good.
Did you say that it was called the Freedom Award? Okay.
It was on my calendar as the Patriot Award meeting, so it was, but it's the, the highest award, the Patriot Award is one we've won before, and now we're going for the Freedom Award. Okay, good, thanks. We had a regional council of mayors meeting on the 9th as well. One of the issues that came up, we've got a subgroup working on regional economic development issues, and Terry Schneider, the mayor of Minnetoka, and his group are looking at the issue of whether some of the fiscal disparities money that we pay into that pool that comes out of a commercial industrial tax base, it's about $420 million a year that goes into the region for purposes of more uniform or predictable development. And so it's, you know, Edina, Minnetoka, Bloomington, and two other cities are the top five payers, and St. Paul, Blaine, and I don't remember the other cities, are the top five receivers. But the notion is that we should look at whether or not, some of that money should be peeled off for regional economic development purposes with deed and greater MSP. And if we could peel off 5% to 10% of it, we're looking anywhere from 20 to 40 million dollars a year that we could use to help with job attraction, job growth, job retention. So stay tuned on that. It's kind of an interesting issue. And then on the 13th, Manager Neil and I had breakfast with Rick Dresson and Randy Meyer, and talked about a few issues, including, is it future of the bus garage again? It's resurfaced, you know, as it always does every few weeks, it seems like. And they heard what we had to say, and we're going to go back and talk to the board about it. I think the, the most important notion we advanced was that they hold a key piece of property for this whole Grandview Square redevelopment, and we want to make sure that things happen there that are in the best interest of the whole community. And we'd like to control it, but I don't know if that'll happen, you know, if we can get an option or write a first refusal. They're going to think about it from a concept standpoint and get back to us. And tomorrow's tab, tomorrow is Jennifer Janaby's first meeting of the Transportation Advisory Board of the Met Council, so I'll be eager to see her over there at 1:30 and, and visit with her about it. So that's it for me. Manager Neil?
Thank you, Your Honor. I've got three things. First thing is that the Energy and Environment Commission has been considering options on, on how to move forward with the reconsideration or the, of the city's recycling contract, the residential recycling contract. You know, there's a couple of basic ways this could go about. You could renegotiate, try to renegotiate, or at least propose to renegotiate a long-term deal or a short-term deal, but some kind of bi-, you know, bilateral renegotiation with the existing vendor, or we could go forward with a, a kind of a multilateral RFP, competitive RFP process. And there has been a discussion on that matter at the EEC, and their advice to council is that we, we design it as an RFP, a competitive RFP process. We'd like to get them moving on that, and if that, if there's any objection from council, we certainly can schedule it for dialogue, but I would, I would affirm that as a, as a recommendation, and we'd like to give them a charge to move forward with it. See reasonable?
Do you need that in the form of a motion?
Sure.
All right.
So move.
Okay. Second, all right, discussion. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed say nay. Carried.
Second item is that Representative Downey has submitted a bill to restructure the way that we do our budgeting, the way that city governments do budgeting. The bill has already been calendared and submitted. He is the primary, he's carrying the bill, and so I've offered to meet with him and talk to him about his bill and how it might impact us, you know, logistically and mechanically, how it would impact the city government. He's taken me up on that offer, so I will be meeting with him to talk about that next week. And the only other thing I have is that we have a new chairperson of the Municipal Legislative Commission and is the Right Honorable James Hovland, Mayor of Edina.
Thank you.
Or maybe condolences.
Only four meetings a year.
Okay.
Wow, it's more than four. I don't know if they told you that. There's a fair amount, there's four meetings a year, but the chair...
Maybe a little testimony.
Yes, the chair of the MLC is, is also often prevailed upon by the MLC organization and by city groups to testify on behalf of cities. And yeah, it is supposed to be a bonding bill this year, a bonding bill year at the legislature, but that doesn't mean what it used to mean. There'll still be a fair amount of policy taken up, and some of it, like this budgeting bill actually, related to what we do, so I think you'll probably have that opportunity. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And that's all I have.
All right, you know, I just noticed from my notes here that we didn't discuss whether the council had an inclination with regard to this moratorium request of Jackie Wittbeck's. Do we want to send it anywhere? Send it to planning? Send it to staff?
You tried to put a moratorium on a lot subdivision, and you got sued and you lost. So my recommendation would be that when you have one pending in the pipeline, that that wouldn't be the first thing that you would do.
It is...
Hi, go ahead.
Well, it is an issue on which I, I would appreciate more a work session or more than one work session. I know that we have some planning commissioners who have requested that there be some policy guidance.
Absolutely.
And I know that we have housing goals in our comprehensive plan that we haven't looked at now since 2008 or have looked at only briefly, and I think that, and I, I appreciated the reference to the venerability of the requirement, you know, since the early 1950s. So we have these neighborhoods that do have mostly smaller lots, we have neighborhoods that have mostly larger lots, and then we have neighborhoods that have some division in what, or some assortment of lot sizes. And I think it would really be productive to have some conversation on how we're going to handle these requests.
No, Member Bennett, I totally agree with you. I was just speaking to the moratorium aspect of what she was asking for, and I was not recommending that we would do that.
Well, as she was speaking, my question was knowing that the planning commission is going to be sending us something, what even legally is possible? When, I mean, when something's in the works like that, isn't that what you're describing happened before?
There, there is an element of it where there is a date, you know, kind of the pipeline issue of something is, if we've received a completed application by, by effective date, then that gets to proceed, but it's from that effective date into the future that it's...
Well, I served on the planning commission when we had Arrowhead Lake before you were here, and it had passed the planning point, and it was going to council, and council put a moratorium on it and didn't vote on it, and they were taken to court, and they lost. So I would suggest that this is about at the same place, so I would suggest we'd not do that, but I certainly agree with Member Bennett, that we're going to get more lot subdivisions, and we have this 75-foot minimum lot width, and these lately have been coming in on 50-foot lot areas. So I think we do need to look at that and, you know, how you handle that and what we should be doing and what's the best way to move forward. So yeah, I totally agree with you that we need to look at it. You know, I don't know where you want to initiate it. Do you want a joint meeting? Do you, you know, what would Director Teague recommend?
I could speak to that a little bit. I had some conversation with our planning commission chair following our, our meeting last week, and we discussed that very issue. We intend to have it on the planning commission agenda for our next meeting, next Wednesday, to discuss it, and I think the way that we talked about we'd like to proceed is going to get organized a little bit at the planning commission level and then have a work session with you to, to fully vet that issue. So we do intend to take it up next week.
I, I hope that one element that gets considered, and I think this has been raised by residents, is we, we want our code to mean something, and we want it to be informative to people, and I think that's one of the concerns on, on some, of some of the members of the planning commission is what is happening if, if some, if it is not being followed when these repeat requests come forward.
All right. I concur with both of my colleagues. I, I think we, we visited this issue over on Oaklawn several years ago and discussed having a moratorium there, and there were so many opinions on both sides of the issue when we had a, we took public testimony on it. We decided not to proceed with a moratorium. That was in response to a tear down in a structure, but that, you know, that was also before we ended up through work on the planning commission and the council with what I think is the, probably the tightest ordinance on height and lot coverage in the metro. So I would not favor any discussion about a moratorium at this time, but I appreciate those folks on the planning commission doing that work and then having a session with them about, about this whole issue of massing, so. All right, anything else? Otherwise, we'll adjourn the council meeting and proceed quickly into the HRA agenda and finish that up as well. All right, we stand adjourned from the council meeting. Call to order the meeting of the Edina Housing and Redevelopment Authority. Roll call, please.
Member Bennett, here. Member Brindle, here. Member Sprague, here. Member Swenson, still here. Chair Hovland, here.
We have this evening before us, the, some minutes that we need to approve, I guess. First of all, is there a motion to approve the HRA minutes from January 3rd? Move in seconded, discussion. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed say nay. Carried. Third thing on the agenda is potential approval of an expanded walkway easement between Jerry's Enterprises and the City of Edina.
Thank you, Chair. Members of the Housing and Redevelopment Authority, the proposal before you is an expansion of the existing walkway between the city's parking ramp and Jerry's Hardware Store. To get you oriented a little bit, here is Vernon Avenue, the municipal liquor store, the city parking ramp located here, the new Jerry's Hardware Store will be located here, and then the Jerry's Grocery Store. There are two pedestrian bridges that connect the city parking ramp into Jerry's. This is the public access point, this northern entrance here, and there's a southern bridge or ramp that connects the parking ramp into Jerry's. This is a look at it as it exists today. As you see, there's no door from the outside. It's an emergency exit from Jerry's Supermarket, and occasionally deliveries take place there. This is another look at, at that same ramp or bridge. This is the public access point, the northern bridge. This is the proposed building plan. This is the, to get you oriented, again, this is the city parking ramp, Jerry's Grocery, Jerry's Hardware. This is that ramp that we saw the pictures of. That would remain as is today and would be a, an exit, emergency exit from Jerry's Grocery. What Jerry's is proposing to do is expand that bridge and ramp and provide a new entrance into the hardware store. It would, it would access their rental and repair service activities that will take place at the rear of the store. It's, it would provide access for people bringing in lawn mowers or snow blowers to be repaired. They could access through the back rather than having to lug that equipment through the front door. So the property line that separates these two properties is the building itself. So these ramps are located on city property, so as the HRA, as the property owner, you have the authority to approve this or deny if, if you so choose. Jerry's is proposing to build this expanded bridgeway and pay for the construction, and per the existing agreement, they would continue to maintain it in the future. And per the existing agreement, they would continue to maintain it in the future if it's built. So, uh, if this arrangement is acceptable, um, staff would recommend that the HRA approve the agreement that's in your packet this evening, if acceptable. The city attorney has also reviewed the document and, uh, found it acceptable. And I can stand for questions.
Member Swenson?
And we give up one parking space, correct?
That's correct.
Other questions for Director Teague? Member Brindle?
I do. Um, I'm glad this is up here because I was looking at it in the packet. So, we're going to widen that walkway that now has an L in it. And the new walkway is going to be wider until it gets to the building. But then it's narrow. It, it is the same entrance at the building. Though the entrance itself does not widen, right? Or is this widening here?
Yeah, this would be an entirely new entrance.
Oh, that's a new en, I, I see, I see, I see. Okay, so this entrance that's there goes into the grocery store. And then the widened walkway includes, I missed that. The widened walkway includes the new entrance and the hardware store. Okay.
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Other questions? Is there a motion?
Second.
Move in seconded. We approve, uh, the third amendment to the easement and parking ramp agreement? Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close say nay. Carried. All right. Uh, Member Bennett?
Yes, Your Honor, I would like to request an HRA work session. Um, I've been on the council for over five years, and there's never been one. There's not been one work session or study session, HRA-related, in those five years. And, pardon me? Okay, here's what would be the focus of it. It's my understanding from the reading that I've done, and I'll be doing more, that the HRA was created to address need for housing and redevelopment of blighted areas. I know that we are now planning for discussing potential use of Centennial Lakes-related TIF funds, which in the, uh, abstract seem like a large amount. But we have a lot of good public purposes that we're already, um, uh, talking about applying them for. And I'm, I'm not sure that, how that money is going to address all the different things we want to address. So, the things that I would want to have discussed in a, in a work session would be the role and function of the HRA, which, again, we haven't had a discussion about, the priorities that we're going to have, um, particularly given there's this much money, and this is the list that we already have for it. And then finally, whether it would be time to discuss the formation of an Economic Development Authority as distinct and separate from the HRA. The HRA's been functioning as an Economic Development Authority. So, those are the kind of questions that I would like to address in the work session. And I would feel more comfortable with the public hearing that we're contemplating, that we're planning to hold on February twenty-first. Yes, if, if we were to hold that work session before we have that public hearing, because I think that, again, in terms of priorities, that there could, that would be an interrelationship. Or some of the things that we might discuss, would discuss, could bear on our decision on the twenty-first.
So, we have a joint work session with EEC that evening. Would you propose maybe coming in an hour before?
I would be happy to do that.
You know, this was a question that I sent in today because in the minutes from our last meeting, we moved the public hearing, didn't we? We moved the public hearing to the twenty-first. Not the, okay, okay, very good, thanks.
All right, so what time is the meeting with, uh, EEC?
That's at five-thirty.
Five-thirty? So, do you want to try to, uh, do something at four-thirty?
I would be happy to.
That's not a, that's not a problem for staff. And it would be more problematic to try to move EEC and move HRC, because they've sort of organized themselves now around these meetings and are getting geared up for them.
Does that mean we get two cookies in the lunchbox instead of one?
We can definitely get two cookies, I think. Yeah, we can do, yes.
I've given up cookies. I think I need to request something.
Okay, celery. We'll have celery and cookies. Okay.
Okay.
Caffeinated celery.
You'll send something out on that? Very good.
Negative calories.
Thank you.
Anything else for the HRA? Stand adjourned.